Good evening and welcome to our Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 8, 2025. We have a new, I know it's a reunion of council for the week, July. It's a more difficult year, July. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll pass the floor to Council Restool for our land acknowledge, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we meet today, I would like to take a moment to recognize the importance of the land on which we are gathered. Municipality West Nipissing respectfully acknowledges that we are located on the homelands of the Anishnabi peoples, on the traditional territory of the Nipissing Tamogami and Dokees First Nations, covered by the Robinson-Huron Treaty. We honor and recognize their historical connection to the land and value their significant contributions in shaping and strengthening our communities. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility towards reconciliation and improving our understanding of local indigenous peoples and their culture.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the adoption of addendum and agenda. We do have an addendum this evening. It is on your desk. The items on the addendum, instead of being placed under the addendum section in the agenda number eight, have actually just been placed in line in the subject matter areas for which they apply. You'll see abstractions next to those numbers on there. So I'll take a mover, I'm sorry, yep, mover and secondor, thank you.
It is moved by Council Farran and seconded by Council Larrabee. Be it resolved at the end of the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting on July the 8th, 2025, be adopted as presented.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And the agenda.
It is moved by Council Larrabee and seconded by Council Farran. Be it resolved at the agenda for the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting held on July the 8th, 2025, be adopted as presented.
Okay, Council Larrabee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to closed session, the 5.3.1, since there is identifiable individual and also bid on this item. So I'd like to keep it in closed, please.
Yeah, they're not bids that are formal bids, so I guess the clerk could indicate. Nothing of a competitive nature, it's more for discussion purposes. If they were bids that we were discussing, that were, you know, that were asked for formally by us, then I'd suggest that that would be accurate. And I don't know what you mean by identifiable individuals.
Councilor Larrabee.
Thank you. By the advice of Paul Cassan, our JGBC Commissioner, after reviewing this case, he says we, he agrees that it should be moved into closed session because of there are not legal bids, obviously, but it would disadvantage, if ever we move forward with this subject, it would disadvantage these people that did take the time to look into this case.
With that, Council Pellerin.
I agree with this. Doesn't hurt anything to go to close and, like he says, if somebody took the time to put a bid on it, it's not formal, like he says, but it would be, or it would be somebody's advantage if it does go forward, so yes, I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, to move item number 5.3.1 into closed session, moved by Councilor Larrabee. Council Pellerin would be a second on that, yes? Any questions or comments on the motion to amend? Okay, with that, I'll put that to a vote of council, all in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Five, sorry, Caitlin, thank you, thank you, Councilor Nichol. So that is passed. So then we move back to the original, original motion to adopt the agenda as amended, please. And we have a move, that motion's on the floor, questions or comments on the, any other questions or comments on the original motion? Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, which is delegations and permissions. We have a delegation this evening in regards to public safety and the business impact in the downtown core. And for that, I would like to welcome Kim Palamar to set forward to the podium for the presentation. Welcome, Ms. Palamar.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to talk about the soup kitchen that is located on Main Street in our downtown core. Before I share my concerns, I want to make it absolutely clear that I fully understand and support the need for services like the soup kitchen. Many of the people who rely on it are facing tremendous struggles, homelessness, mental health issues, trauma, and especially addiction. They do deserve our help and our compassion. These people are part of our community and it is our duty to ensure they have access to food, support, and hope. My concern is not about whether we should be helping them. My concern is about where these services are located and the impact of concentrating them in the heart of our business center. Over the past year, I have watched our downtown area change dramatically. I have spoken with business owners, employees, residents, and even some visitors. They are all saying the same thing. Our downtown is not safe anymore. Our businesses are experiencing significant problems. Customers are avoiding the area because of lawyering, public intoxication, people exhibiting aggressive and unpredictable behavior. Shops and restaurants are losing revenue, some are losing thousands of dollars a month in lost business. Staff feel unsafe walking to their vehicles before and after hours and are confronting disruptive behavior outside the storefronts and their businesses. Property owners are dealing with vandalism, graffiti, and littering around their premises and business operations. I have personally heard stories and experienced staff being verbally threatened when asking people not to block their doorways, customers deciding not to come downtown after witnessing public drug use, physical altercations in front of customers and businesses. These are not isolated incidents. This is becoming a pattern, and it's not just for the businesses that are being affected. Residents who live in or near downtown have shared that they feel unsafe walking certain streets, especially after dark. I am one of those residents being affected. We are dealing with noise disturbances and confrontations near our homes. Families are choosing to avoid parks and public spaces because of open drug use and erratic behavior, including drug paraphernalia being left out in the open and littering our yards. As a result, our downtown is losing its vibrancy. Foot traffic is down, the atmosphere is tense. People are starting to view downtown as a place to avoid, instead of a place to visit, a place to shop, and connect with our fellow, our fellow neighbors. It is becoming a place viewed with disgust. Now, I know there is those who will say, moving the soup kitchen will just push the problem somewhere else. And that is a valid concern, but I'd argue that the problem right now is that we've over-concentrated social services in one very small part of town. It's creating what many communities refer to as a magnet effect. When services like the soup kitchen are located downtown, people from all over the region come to that one place, not just for meals, but because other services and shelters are, and connections are nearby. The result is an overwhelming volume of people in crisis in a very small area, creating pressures that businesses and residents and even the soup kitchen staff cannot manage. This is a reason for constant police presence in that downtown area. This isn't about pushing the problem out of sight, it's about managing it in a way that works for everyone. Other communities have found ways to do this, by moving these essential services to areas that are accessible by transportation but away from retail and tourism, the tourism district. By ensuring that transportation is provided so people who need this help can still get there safely and regularly. I also want to emphasize that this isn't about blaming people who are struggling. Addiction is a disease, mental illness is a health issue, and these people do deserve the help. But at the same time, we have to acknowledge the very real impact of this problematic behavior that sometimes comes with those struggles. Open drug use in public spaces, aggressive panhandling, confrontation between individuals, property damage and vandalism that cost the business owners. These behaviors are not only unsafe for the individuals themselves, but also make other community members, including vulnerable people, feel unsafe. Pretending those impacts don't exist does a disservice to everyone. We can expect downtown businesses, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, we cannot expect downtown businesses, property owners, and residents to carry the entire weight of this social issue. Our downtown is supposed to be a commercial hub, a tourism and cultural destination, a place for community events and families. Right now, we have risked all of this. This is also an economic issue. Local businesses are paying more for security, we are losing customers, we are struggling to attract staff who don't want to work in a downtown they perceive as unsafe. If we lose our downtown businesses, we lose jobs, we lose tax revenue, and we lose the heart of our town. That impacts the entire community, including our ability to fund all these social services. So what I am asking for tonight, I'm asking council to perhaps commission an independent impact study on how the soup kitchen's downtown location has affected our businesses, our safety, and our local economy. Explore an alternative location for the soup kitchen that remains accessible to its clients but are away from our main commercial core. Engage directly with the business owners, the residents, and service providers to collaborate on a solution, to investigate funding opportunities for transportation options to ensure these people who need the help can still access services if we relocate it. Develop a comprehensive plan that balances compassion for these vulnerable people with the safety, economic health, and future of our downtown. I believe it is possible to protect these vulnerable residents and preserve a vibrant, safe, and successful downtown area. We should not have to choose one or the other. I thank you for listening and for considering this issue seriously. I look forward to hearing council's thoughts and working together towards a solution that truly serves our entire community.
Thank you so much for your presentation, it was very, very well written. First thing I would like to do is ask if you would be willing to share your words with the rest of council, because there were things in there that I did want to take away, that I want to make sure that I capture as far as the specific asks. So if it's possible to either share back through our clerk so that can be shared with council, I for one would appreciate that, just because I'd like to take a little bit more time to digest it than, you know, when you're listening, when you're actively listening and trying to put it together. I'll open the floor to questions or comments from our members. Yep, thank you, Council Farran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to ask, how do you think not having the soup kitchen will solve the homelessness problem in Sterling Falls? And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not myself convinced that maybe all the social problems that you listed there are caused by homeless people. You mentioned that often is younger people going around with Big Bang cans. Vandalism is not always down to homeless people, but that's what I'm wondering, how will closing a soup kitchen, and I'm not even sure that it would be an RRE mitt, to tell a local charity that they can't operate their soup kitchen at a certain address, but how do you think it's going to solve the problem?
I don't think it will solve a homelessness problem. I think it will solve a vibrancy problem, and it will solve a lot of the lawyering, a lot of the vandalism, and a lot of the verbal altercations, as well as physical altercations that are going around downtown. I'm there, I see it.
But not having the soup kitchen is going to suddenly, where, how is it going to magically solve the problem? Are the homeless people, if we don't have the soup kitchen, if the soup kitchen's not there, will they just magically disappear?
No, I'd like to move the soup kitchen to another location that is not in our downtown core.
Where would you suggest?
Well, there's, there's areas near, perhaps to the hospital, where there's other services for people with those, with issues like mental health and drug addiction. They're not in the downtown core, where, where our community is supposed to thrive, where people are not afraid to run into one of these people that is on a drug, drug trip, we'll call it, I don't know if you want to call them there, I don't need drugs, but, you know, when you meet up with them, you're afraid because they're kicking and they're screaming and they're carrying weapons in their pockets. I've had it, where a gun fell out right in front of my office door of his pocket. And when you have to lock your business doors and you can't, you're afraid to let customers in because there's other things going on outside, it's, it's a problem. So that, that service should be moved somewhere where community members who do not have those issues should feel comfortable walking around freely and not afraid to come downtown and, and, you know, shop, or, or do their business, go to the bank, you know, buy their insurance, you know, hold a chip scan, go buy their wallet buttons, whatever, whatever they want to do. But a lot of people are refraining from going downtown.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Council Larrabee.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. And I do, I do agree to a certain point, yes, there's places in Sudbury that people avoid going to that special Tim Hortons because there's a lot of needles and stuff on the ground, so, and the location of the hospital in that area, that would, that would be perfect, if they have the hospital services there, like you said, mental health and stuff. So I would be in agreement if it's possible to move it, if there's another location, definitely it shouldn't be in the downtown core. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just note on a, on a more kind of technical aspect, you know, the premises that are being rented by this not-for-profit group is, is a private, like it's a, it's a private property owned by an individual who has a landlord-tenant relationship. There is not a lot within our purview as council or as municipality, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barbo, because I'm always afraid of speaking out of turn, that could control who somebody rents their property to. And, you know, so, you know, that's, that's one thing where, you know, we, this is not, it's not like they're using a municipal space that is within our downtown core and we can move, move the organization to another municipal space that is more appropriately located. And so I just want to note that, is that, you know, we don't have control over where somebody chooses to rent a premises. And I'll just leave it at that. Council Restool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the presentation. I think it's, it's a very big issue, and it's a big issue that is complex, and there's a lot of things that need to go into looking at something in terms of a different location, the impact, I agree with our council, on the end of the table there. I don't think that that's going to resolve this issue. If anything, it's just going to relocate the issue to a resident, more residential area where the hospital is. I think one of the important pieces, and I don't know if we're obviously not in budget season, so to, you know, to get a full study going and the cost that's associated with it, I don't think I would guess it might not be something that's on the appetite of councils right now. But I think there's a lot of service agencies in our community who work closely with these individuals, with some of the individuals, obviously not all, but I think it would be important to engage in discussions that we have and to get to the root of some of the issues that we're facing. And I can say by sitting on the DSA board in North Bay, looking at permanent housing or, you know, transitional housing for individuals who are struggling with these issues, it's not easy, and we've been, we've been dealing with it for probably a couple of years, ever since we've been elected to our term here, and we still haven't found a solution that works. And, you know, the old NIMBY always comes up, right? Nobody wants it in their own backyard, so let's try to find somewhere else. That's not a solution to the issue, we need to put a little bit more thought into it. And I think if we're going to do something aside from a full study, and I'm sure we can probably find studies from across the country in terms of issues with homelessness and drug use and challenges in downtown cores, as mentioned Sudbury, they're going through this, North Bay's going through this, we're going through this. It's not an issue that was here 10 years ago when I was on council back then, it just wasn't, visible homelessness wasn't, it didn't exist, but it does now, so we have to see what we can do to come up with a solution. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think we, to simply pick it up and move this organization who's providing meals to individuals somewhere else, I don't think that's going to resolve anything. I think there's a reason why people are drawn to the downtown core, I'm not saying it's okay, but we have to figure that out, what can we do? I have always come from the perspective that we have law enforcement, we pay for law enforcement, and if there's issues with that, we should be in our law enforcement to enforce some of these, not that that's the be-all and end-all for a solution. We also have to engage those organizations that help these individuals who are not in good places, and how can we put up their efforts, how can we work with them collectively as a community to try and find some solution to this? So I know we're not voting or anything like that, but my thought is, I don't think conducting a study, it's not going to make the problem go away. We have to work with what we have, we have to engage those groups like No More Tears, and it's not coming to me in my mind right now with the other organizations who work with individuals who are in those situations to see what we can do. And, and I think location is another big, big issue, like it's great in a concept to say, let's move them toward, let's move this soup kitchen closer to the hospital where we have the community health center and other services there, but we're, like, we're always in a crunch for space in terms of that, so there's a lot that needs to go into it. I appreciate businesses coming forward to share their concerns, but I think we have to work as a community with our community partners to see what we can do short term and longer term, but it's, it's just, it's a massive issue. Like I mentioned through my seat at DSA, it's been years that we're trying to, and the more you talk about it and the more you come up with different areas where you can have services or housing, or you're always getting turned back from residents in that particular area, that, not here, please, and you go back to the drawing board, so we've taken up enough of our allotted time, but I just wanted to share that. It's an issue for sure, we have to work with, with our partners to try and find solutions.
Councilor St. Marie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to reiterate everything that basically everybody has said so far. I do understand the problem 100%. I've seen it myself, I, you know, where the police came downtown and dealt with the situation. My only concern would be to moving a soup kitchen, let's say, towards near the hospital. Well, now you're taking an area, or soup kitchen, you're putting it in an area where you have schools, where you have childrens who are not able to defend themselves or, you know, speak out against these individuals that, you know, are panhandling or whatnot. So that would be my biggest concern in that, those areas, right? And especially in residential areas, you know, you have childrens playing outside. Yes, the downtown core is not the best place 100%, but at least most of the individuals walking around downtown are adults that hopefully are able to, you know, stand up to the individuals and, you know, deal with the situation, or have a cell phone to call the police, or to deal with the situation. A lot of these childrens, whether it's in schools or whatnot, don't have access to that, to that process. That would be my fear of moving it near a residential area and/or, like we said, the hospital, you know, talking about schools and stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else, Council Hongy?
Thank you. Do the OPP actually respond when you actually call them for a service request, or?
They're there quite often.
Quite often, okay.
Well, they're there daily, I'll have to say.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Farran.
I'd just like to make one more point, hopefully, because it's quite relevant, but you know, No More Tears is not part of, and the soup kitchen's not part of the problem, it's very much part of the solution. I've been there, I know Delia and her team, and they are, they've had some incredibly great success stories in getting some of these homeless people housed, permanently housed, into treatment, and so we have to work with them to help them continue the great work they're doing, because they are part of the solution. That's my opinion. Uh, that's my opinion.
I have staff who has anxiety of going into the because we're right across the street.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and doesn't want to use, leave her vehicle outdoors. Like, it's getting really bad. They urinate on our vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not cool. No?
Um, I, I guess I'll close. Like, I can appreciate, um, the concerns as far as keeping a vibrant commercial sector because I, I often say proudly that I think that we're very lucky in Sturgeon Falls that our downtown hasn't undergone, uh, the same fate as some other northern communities where you see, you know, three empty storefronts for, for everyone that is, that is vacated. We have a lot of essential services, banking, uh, post office, pharmacies, uh, downtown, which then bring the foot traffic to the other secondary businesses. And it, and it has really kept, um, our, our downtown section of Sturgeon Falls alive and well. And it is a symbol of the community. In some of the work that I've done, um, uh, in some of the sessions that I've attended with various community building, you know, they talk about creating a place, you know, having, having that place where people do congregate because we all know that the social interaction that comes with a vibrant downtown is good for a community. Um, but so is influencing, um, the people who need the help of the community more. You know, they, they often say it takes a deliberate. I would second councillor Fetterin's, um, feelings in regards to the work that No More Tears, uh, is doing. There's, there was a large gap in services that was not being filled. Uh, and they, they are doing a good job with what, uh, with what they do and serving a clientele, um, that, that definitely needs access to those services. And they help direct people to services. We have the DSAB offices downtown on, well, not quite downtown, but on King Street as well. Um, and, you know, I, I think that there has, in the last year, there has been a good collaboration, um, uh, built with, um, some members of council and the, uh, the administration at No More Tears. Uh, and, and they're, you know, they, they are good people to work with and, and so we can understand that. I mean, it, it is something to look, look at. I would like to look at your presentation because I do appreciate the concerns. Um, but I, I agree with Janie and with councillor Fetterin where it really is a collaborative, um, effort because everybody deserves a place in our community. So, whether that's downtown or not. But, but I do thank you very much. Uh, the presentation was very, very well put together and, and appreciate the thought and the preparation that went into, uh, went into, kind of. So thank you. Anybody else before we close? Okay. So thank you so much for your time, really.
Okay, I'll leave it here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda for this evening, uh, we will move into, we'll leave the whole, uh, part five. And we have in general government, 5.1.1 surplus property disposition policy. Uh, this is a agenda request item submitted by councillor Fetterin. Um, so would you like to speak to that councillor Fetterin?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see if, uh, go back, like, it used to, it used to be partially, like, for example, all the vehicles that we mentioned last week, last meeting, uh, these would marveling to go through Gov. Deal, right? Like pickups and?
It, it does depend on, on the, uh, on the, what is, what is surplus. We've certainly done Gov. Deals for some of our trucks and for our fleet. Sometimes things is just scrap metal, but it's, it's simply past its life expectancy entirely for resale. We have advertised stuff locally. We've, we've done a variety of things in disposing of assets.
So, anyway, that's what I'd like. I'd like to, stuff like this to be put in an ad in the Tribune so people, local people can, can bid on it. And if they don't, well, then they get to the scrapyard. Because I'm sure some of the people around here would bid on those, like I said last meeting, for maybe parts. I'm sure that some of these trucks probably got, you know, the dollars of the tires underneath there. Because, and, and other parts, like, we had, what? About 10 vehicles and some of those were even 10 years, 10 years old. So, uh, that's my, my feeling about it.
Okay. Mr. Barbour, did you know that?
Say, yeah. There, there is a draft policy that's before you as well on the subject matter, if council has any comments on that.
Uh, councillor Resto, thank you.
We are moving on first.
Yes.
Uh, through you, my mayor. I, I appreciate the work that went into the policy that's drafted. Um, I guess my thoughts that I had at our last meeting, and I, I carry them forward to this meeting too, is, uh, like we do with a lot of information that comes to us, it comes from staff, uh, who are, who are well experienced and educated in their roles. And I think they bring items to us based on their assessment of situations as well. We certainly have some situations where vehicles are taken from one department and moved to another department because there's still use in there. And I know we're not necessarily talking about that, but that's part of one department's surplus, so we'll use it somewhere else. I was thinking, because you made that comment, councillor Fetterin, at the last meeting as well, that one vehicle is only a certain years old, number of years old. And I'm not debating that, but I think the use that that vehicle's been through as well is probably a little bit different. Um, you know, if my vehicle's 10 years old and I'm driving on the highway all the time, that's something. If it's a public works vehicle, it's been well-used because we have work to do in the community, it might not be in the best of shape. And that's something that we take assessment from our staff on. They look at these vehicles. Uh, so I, I'm, I, I guess I'm not against going back to the old ways of posting stuff there, but I also think it's extra work for staff in situations where these things have been looked at and assessed by whichever staff members assess these. And in their opinion, if it's not something where there's significant value, tying it up into postings on, on, um, the Tribune where it's not going to, likely won't generate anything. Again, the policy outlines different levels and I agree with that. But when it comes to, you know, when they're at their end of life and there's nothing, I'll say this, hopefully I don't get beat up by other councillors, but we're not in the used vehicle business, right? We use our staff, give us their opinion like they do on everything, roads, bridges, sidewalks. And we take that and we make our decision. I don't want to tie up our staff in every vehicle that goes out has to get posted. I want to rely on them. And when they have their assessment of a vehicle, I guess everything has a value to it, right? Nothing, but we've got to keep moving forwards. And I don't want, just don't want to get tied up on everything that we want to dismiss because staff sees there's no value to it, that we have to go back and post stuff and follow up and take bids and it ties up time. And we all know, we've, over the last couple of years, our staff work hard. Uh, they're not sitting at their desk twiddling their thumbs. There's a lot of work to do. So I wouldn't want to get too tied up in posting everything that goes out and we have to put it all. It's, again, we're talking too much, but all.
It's a nice change from, from me being told that I talk too much, so thank you, councillor Resto. Uh, councillor Larabee?
Thank you, my mayor. Well, I tend to disagree with this. I think, I think the taxpayers are paying for those equipment. And if there's, sometime it's scrapped one and it's gold to the other one. So if, if there's some resident that's interested in putting a bid on it and it, it could, it could help them out, uh, fine and handy, I'm, I'm all for that. And if we get nothing on it, it's to use or whatever, it doesn't, doesn't take that, that much effort to just say, I've got a Ford F-150 whatever for sale. And if it doesn't move, then you send it for scrap. But I think the resident should have a first crack at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Fetterin?
One thing, we would support our local Tribune. Secondly, uh, I, I pick up my, the engine might be blown. Okay, so they're not going to put the money in to fix it. I understand that. But for some other people, the rest of the truck would be very useful. And like I say, if it doesn't sell, then send it to the scrap. And it doesn't take very much time. We're going to do that maybe once or twice a year. You've got so many items, put it in the Tribune and it's done. Doesn't take, uh, nope. I, I bought surplus equipment in the past from the municipality. I bought an operator for parts. I bought an excavator. I bought a dump truck. And the dump truck and the excavator, I still have and I still run it. Okay, I know it wasn't feasible for the municipality to do it, but it's good for me and I just use it for myself. So that's the point. And the taxpayers paid for all these backups, so they should have the first crack at it. And if it doesn't go, then we send it to the scrap.
Okay, thank you. I'll just note, for the record, that councillor Fetterin is referring to buying municipal equipment prior to his son role as a member of council. Uh, just so there's no, no confusion about that as was like way back, well before 2022, just to clear on that. Uh, other questions or comments? Councillor Saint Louis?
Thank you, my mayor. I understand where councillor Fetterin is coming from. And I don't disagree, however, where do you draw that line, right? So you post something on the Tribune or the municipal website and it's a pickup truck and somebody comes and bids 500. So we talked about taxpayers should have the first crack at it. Okay, but I'm also a taxpayer. So if I put $500 as a bid and nobody else bids, then you get over 500, but yet the municipality could have sent it to the scrapyard for 2,500. Now we just lost $2,000 of taxpayers' money, right? So where do you draw that line? Where do you make that fine line? So to do that, my thought process is all of those vehicles now need to be assessed, right? So somebody's going to have to come and evaluate those vehicles and say, okay, that grader is worth $10,000 at the scrapyard or whatnot. And I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I think it's a great idea. But I think there's more to it than just saying, put it on the Tribune. Because again, if we can get more money, talking about taxpayers' dollar, if we can get more money on a, on an item than just me or yourself purchasing it, then I think we need to get more money for the item. That's all I'm, I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fetterin.
Thank you, my mayor. I, I, I agree with this to a certain extent. And I just want to touch on a point that, uh, that councillor Saint Louis made. The, the process of evaluating is already happening. I mean, they, they go through this process of saying, well, we, it's worth 2,500. I forget what the details in the policy are, but, you know, well, we should send, we should put this on Gov. Deals, uh, this one. I think it's more where there's apparently low value to the item and that then may become valuable to someone else. It's like the old saying, one man's junk is, is another man's treasure. And, and I, I agree, we should find a way maybe once or twice a year, um, to, to give people the chance to buy these things because they might, you know, recycle it um, rather than, than scrapping it. Um, but that, that process is already happening. And, and I don't think that we would end up selling something for $500 that's potentially worth 2,500 because staff will go through it and they'll say, well, you know, if it's worth that much, then we'll put, we'll put it out to auction. And, and if, if somebody in the municipality wants to bid on it, they can just simply give on Gov. Deal.
Um, I'll just, I'll just throw a thought out there. Um, and that is, I, I'm hearing what everybody's saying and, and then it becomes, how just, does one write a policy that does all that without it being overly burdensome? And I'll just leave you with that thought as we continue the discussion. Councillor Fetterin?
Oh. Okay. Uh, just to follow up for Mr. Saint Louis, I fully agree and it's an easy, easy thing to do. What they used to do is put a reserve, a reserve bin on it. And it's very easily done, you know? Just go and, you know, but the, the truck weighs and the grader, same thing. And that's, that was done at the time. It, it takes two minutes. And you know, almost the tonnage is worth at the scrapyard right now, it's about 2, 250, 275. So it's a very easy fix. That's it.
Here is, uh, it's my thought, you just said. I'll reserve it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so a policy has been, uh, a draft policy has been fixed, um, in the agenda. Uh, I guess what I'd like to see is a show of hands on who would like to see amendments to the policy that would, um, allow for some kind of, um, residents' first option for the disposition of, because I don't think this policy is written in that way. Is that correct?
There's not a, it goes to West Nipissing first.
Well, not residents, but, you know, like, it goes out kind of to the public before it goes to Gov. Deals or before it goes to scrap.
Well, it, it doesn't speak to going in any of those specific methods.
Yeah.
Right, it, it does speak to, to, um, you know, thresholds. So, you know, very small value things, um, versus, you know, things, and, you know, things more than a, a thousand dollars. Um, and, and look at how they are transferred and just, you know, it just fills specifically, you know, public sale by auction, tender, other means, trade-ins, um, recycling when there's, when there's no residual value. Um, so it, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, it does speak to how we dispose. It doesn't have that must-go-to-West-Nipissing-first, you know? And it doesn't say, and everything else is going to go to Gov. Deals or everything else is going to go to the, the Tribune. Um, you know, and there, there is, certainly councillor Saint Louis' point is, is sometimes true. And when we have, um, things like fire trucks and, and such like that that have brought, um, value still to them, the value that we're going to get off Gov. Deals will far exceed what we're going to get locally altogether. 100%, every time. You know, and so it, it is, that's why there's sort of a, a number of options that can be, can be used there in, in the policy that's in front of you.
Just a?
Uh, I'll go to councillor Fetterin first.
Just a quick point, I, I would just say that, you know, we, regardless of the policy, we have to maximize how much we get for that. So i- if you say that going on Gov. Deals for a fire truck, for example,
far exceeds what we would get locally, then we have to do that. That's our first priority.
So I guess the question in front of us, oh, sorry, Councilor Pellerin?
Yeah, I agree with that statement. Just one, just curious. Let's say those 10 vehicles, those pickups. I don't think you'd be going to Gov. Deal with those. I think those would be going straight to the scrap.
I don't remember all the vehicles that we had listed. I know some of them were earmarked for scrap. Yes, I don't remember all the vehicles that were on the list. And we certainly would go through all of them, but some of them I know were earmarked for scrap, yes.
Those, or the ones I'm talking about, the 10 vehicles, this should be attended in the Tribune. That's all.
Okay, so you're proposing that before any surplus assets are determined to go for scrap or recycling, that they be offered for sale through local means? So whether that's through the municipal website or whether that is through advertisements in the Tribune or a combination of both, that they're made available locally first with a minimum asset at scrap value? And if anybody offers more than scrap value, then we sell it locally? And, you know, if after a three-week period, there's no suitable bids, then it goes to scrap as planned? Is that...
Yep, yep.
And so it's just those kinds of scrap pieces where there really is not a lot of resale potential for it?
That's it. You just put a set a date, and those are not going to go to Gov. Deal. Scrap, or somebody bids on them on the Tribune. That's it. Like, there's no machines, not too long.
What's that?
I mean, you're already looking at a very small margin. I think that if you were looking at that, I would look at their website creating section. No offense to the Tribune, but under the sign of minimizing expense and maximizing return.
Yeah. Other questions, comments? So just trying to put this together into some kind of actionable... Oh, sorry, Councilor...
No, thank you.
Ms. Brannan, please.
So looking at number seven under disposal, and it lists there, and on 7D, recycle scrap or discarded items with no residual value, something in there that we're going to add that items with no residual value will be offered for sale on the municipality... Something, something, something.
That's what I was looking for, is where the, in this policy.
Yeah.
So it is that, first, I'd just like to see from council, is there council support or Councilor Pellerin's suggestion that scrap or recyclable materials be offered first to the public? Because I need the council's support to ask staff to amend the policy. So a show of hands, please. Okay, thank you. So if that change can be worked into this policy and then brought back, is there any other discussions in regards to the policy that's been presented? At Councilor Pellerin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just add, maybe using social media, just posting it on our website, but, you know, posting it on little Facebook pages. And that gets much more exposure than posting on the website.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that policy? So that's it. Fairly straightforward. And keeping it limited to that scrap makes it a little bit more manageable in the staff and in front of...
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll close that topic for this evening. We have one more item under General Government this evening. And 5.1.2 is a agenda request item brought forward by Councilor Rivard in regards to naming our Zambonis and snowplows. So I will pass the floor for opening on that to Councilor Rivard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We don't sell any of these plows.
Because once they're named, we'll be attached.
To name something you care about.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just some, thank you. This is just something that I saw other towns were doing. And actually, the day after, I was driving in North Bay, and I saw the Snowmanator, which is a plow in North Bay. So I just thought it'd be a great, like, easy enough initiative that could build some community engagement, especially for the youth, and maybe some community spirit around our snowplows and our Zambonis. So my idea was maybe if it's possible, that, you know, there'd be an open duration of time for submissions, three weeks, four weeks, whatever it may be. And then if we could be presented with somewhat finalists, depending on the number of assets we have. I think there's only two Zambonis, plows, I'm not too sure, but it's quite a bit more of those than Zambonis.
Plows and graders.
Yeah. So, and then we could decide what to do at that point or...
I have such a good one, I can't wait to read it. Okay, how many Zambonis do we have, Mr. Plouet?
Well, two in our arenas. We have a spare one that we provide as a spare.
Okay. So I'll take questions or comments on the item. Councilor Pellerin?
One comment, one question.
Okay.
How much would the painting would cost? That would be, and the other one, why not sell advertising in our Zambonis and their trucks instead? That would be...
Okay, well, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know who would. Okay, Councilor Pellerin?
Thank you. I think that may confuse, people might think that it's a, you know, a home hardware vehicle, you know? Is it a home hardware vehicle? Or is it advertising on one of our vehicles? So maybe that would lead to a bit of confusion. I prefer to stick with Councilor Rivard's suggestion.
Okay. Thank you. I think it'd be a really cool idea to perhaps bring it forward to, like, the contest and the whole thing, if we were to go through with it, to bring it forward to the start of the school year. Maybe run it through September to beginning of October, if we were going to do something like that. As far as, you know, the pricing or what the cost would be, I mean, we generally put municipal graphics on our vehicles in one form or another, so I can't see that the cost would be exorbitant.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. And I know I've seen in other communities, I don't think that they always name, like, all of their snowplows. Like, they might do four and stuff like that, so that we're not doing everybody. But we certainly can find out some of that information. Yeah.
Okay, so do you have any further ideas on how that might roll out? Or...
I was wondering that as well when I saw the Snowmanator. It looked pretty big, and like, I was wondering the same thing, because they probably have it on both sides, right? But it just depends on what we feel comfortable doing or moving forward with. Maybe, you know, there's no logo, like, that one has a big logo. It's just a name potentially that's a lot more cost efficient, or it's just not doable. But, or we pick and choose, you know, two plows, two Zambonis? Or, I do remember when you brought up the advertisements. I remember Sturgeon used to have that giant tiger yellow Zamboni, and that was kind of like a staple when you go to the rink, right? But, no, I'd just be interested to see what comes of it, or if we receive some pricing first to see if we actually do want to move forward with something like this.
Okay, Councilor Larrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think for the Zambonis, it's a great idea to sell advertising on them. That would be bringing money in. And for the snowplows, I don't know if we could, if we do have, or the app that says, "Follow my plow", I know it's not in the, but on MTO, you go on that app, and you know exactly where the snowplows are. So some resident's saying, well, okay, well, where's my plow now? Go on there, and they attract snowplows. So there's no question on where it is. So I know it's off the topic of the advertising, but this is something we could look at in the fall.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep, Madam Mayor.
Yes. And Councilor Holly?
I'd like to know the cost of putting the logo first before we move forward with this. And also decide if we want to put it on both sides of the vehicle, and maybe from there, we could decide, depending on the size that it's going to be, and maybe brought back for a discussion. But that's possible.
That suggestion. Who would be in favor of just staff getting a pricing on what the actual cost would be to move forward with that as far as the graphics and everything like that? Because I think Councilor Conne is probably right. We don't want to commit ourselves to something if the cost on something we're willing to take on. But they, staff could come back at next meeting just with the pricing option on that? Should be. You guys have your vendors that you use for branding on our vehicles already? Who would be in favor of that approach? And then we can have a great discussion next meeting. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we move into Planning Committee. And for that, I'll pass the floor to Councilor St. Louis, our Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So under Planning, we have two items. By point, my official plan meeting summary. So we met last month in regards to the official plan. And we went through a bunch of items. I'm assuming I may pass it over to Mr. Garble to provide us with additional information?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really, through you, Planner. Sam provided you with her best guess at the summary and a little bit of a feedback on some of the changes. But you have before you what we believe were the discussion points that we took away from that meeting. I'll open it up to any members' comments or conversation.
So anybody have any questions?
Councilor Pellerin?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, St. Louis. I, something that, I don't know whether it's appropriate for me to raise this now, but something came up after the meeting, a point, and I'm wondering how something will be implemented. But I believe, in terms of severances, I think we were going to four plus the retained. But that there was going to be a seven-year restriction on further severances to avoid the loophole of people doing a severance and then severing again. And I'm just wondering how that will be implemented? Because, for example, if someone had done a severance today, and then the official plan is approved next year, does that seven-year start count? Would it start counting from when it was done the year before? Or would that seven-year kick in only for severances that are done after the official plan and the zoning law is implemented?
Madam Kirk? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three, Mr. Chair. Typically, any, sorry. Typically, any policy, the rules of the policy don't take effect until the policy's adopted. So it would be severances subsequent to the adoption of the plan.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
May I just ask a follow-up on that? And does that seven-year restriction on the consent severances apply to both the retained and the severed portions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, good, sir. Thank you. Thank you. And another follow-up. If someone had done a severance, let's say, only in 201, and they retained, would the seven-year restriction still apply? Let's say, if they decide next year that they want to do another severance, so they're still within the four plus retained? Because I would feel it's a little bit unfair to say, well, if you do a severance in two now, that you're restricted to do another one for seven years. And maybe just say, well, you could do up to the four and retained.
Three, Mr. Chair. I can look at the language and make sure that it, if council is in agreement, that the language would only have that number. But each, so the lot that you severed this year couldn't be severed for another seven. If you did one next year, that one, the seven would start, and the retained would be... That's difficult, because then the retained... You know what? I'm going to ask the consultant, because I don't know how that could be worded, but I understand, and if council is in agreement with that kind of a change, I can certainly...
Maybe something like, cannot exceed four plus retained in a period of seven years.
Or that the seven years resets on all if they do a second severance? So if they did a severance that was two plus retained, and then they took two more out of the retained, that the seven-year timeline on all of the original resets? Like, I don't know what the right way to write that policy is, but there's something in there that's going to be unclear.
Yeah, I will, I think I understand what's being asked, and I will put it back to the consultant as to how that could be worded so that everyone has the opportunity to do up to four within a seven-year period. But that, what is created from that cannot be further severed for another seven years. Is that...
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Councilor Pellerin?
Thank you, Councilor St. Louis. Yeah, it used to be in the past that the reset was on a new official plan, right? Everything would start over when the new official plan is adopted. So I think, but from as soon as the official plan is in place, then for seven, you're done for seven years. You've got seven years to sever your four lots. In seven years, it starts over again. I don't know. It's really easy, easy to do it. Seven years, ten years?
I'm not sure.
I'm just jotting down, and I'm going to, I'm going to leave it to somebody...
Madam Mayor? So will we be getting an updated draft? I guess we would be on V6 by now, or like that, that incorporates the things that were discussed?
That's correct.
Okay. May I have one more question, please? Three, Mr. Chair. I, just in regards to the settlement area boundary expansion, I do appreciate the information that's been provided. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't think about including it as part of the project's scope, because the last official plan, I think the original drafts were done in 2008, 2009. So, you know, we're 15 years out. So it would have been nice to actually take a little bit more strategic look at settlement areas in regards to how settlement patterns have evolved over that time, and whether, you know, what are current settlement areas that were designated in 2008 still serve the municipality-looking 20 years down the road? So, you know, I understand that there's a lot to that piece of it. But, yeah, it's, I would have, I wish we had that as part of a discussion.
Due to the fact that the land in question might have been properly zoned for ag, and therefore, there was an assumption that it would be ag. And so there would have been no way of assuming that, given the conventional policy statement on ag land, right?
To some extent, yes. But where the boundary in Cache Bay stops now, I believe, is T-Bowl or just past T-Bowl. And there, like, that part, there's been significant development along Leback, even between that and where the fields start. There's a pocket of land there that's already seeing R1-type developments along there because it is service. But it's also the other boundaries. You know, we've looked at areas along Canal Road, which is the boundary. And, you know, it's been determined it's quite difficult to provide municipal services there because of the geology of the terrain. And so whether, you know, it's just a more strategic, long-term approach than saying, you know, well, whatever was done in 2000, that will be fine till 2050. So, but the memo that's been provided is very useful. Thank you.
Councilor Pellerin? Thank you. Can I, I read the memo. I understand the issue, but I don't, what are the implications of not being able to change the settlement area designation at this stage?
Through you, they're only theoretical, right? Because there isn't any settlement there now. And so what council wanted to have is to amend the urban boundaries, settlement boundaries from west, from the west part of Cache Bay to the north part of Cache Bay. But they haven't been settled yet. They're, my understanding is that land is still farmed right now, but it's zoned rural. And it was going to be zoned agricultural and recommended to be zoned agricultural, because as I understood it, I'm kind of a lazy person at this, but I think they were going on a soils-based test, and what's potentially ag and should be ag. And so if you were farming it and it needs that soil test, then that's why they were recommending it to ag. So there was a decision that was made by various, you know, I don't know bodies, but to not put it ag, and put it rural. And then the evolution of that was recently, the council had was then to amend what, let's call it, Lennon properties, and take that out of the urban settlement and put it, and expand the urban settlement. So it really was a hypothetical, theoretical type of thing. If that wasn't farmed land, then it probably would have had a good discussion before that. But, so I think it was just a sequence of decisions that led it to that.
I'll just, hold on. So what about, but it's a different issue then. So it doesn't mean that that area would go into the agricultural area designation?
No, I think the decision that the committee made or the council ultimately would make has been was to alter the initial draft plan so that it remains rural.
Madam Mayor? Sorry, I think one of the limitations is, like, even when you look at between... Sorry, I think one of the limitations is, like, even when you look at between Tibo and where the fields start, is that with that land not included as part of an urban settlement area, you're not supposed to, you correct me, this is, according to the Planning Act, you're not supposed to be creating R1 lots outside of your urban settlement area. So even though there is land in that triangle, kind of from Tibo up to the farmers' fields that has access to municipal servicing, the lots there would still be need, in theory, under policy, should be created as rural residential lots with the minimum lot size. So even though it has access to servicing, I believe there's something in the planning act or something that says you're not supposed to be creating R1, R2, R3, R4 lots unless they are within an urban settlement area. And so that's the benefit of declaring one part over another is that it's basically stating the intention of the municipality to service those lands in an orderly fashion in a more denser settlement pattern. Is that, would that be accurate-ish? I'm not hearing, but if Madam Chair would like to...
I might have completely misunderstood. However, I think what Madam Chair is referring to is how properties are labeled within an urban service boundary. Over time, because West Nipissing has had circumstances where partial servicing was extended, where property, where just water was available or just sanitary was available, prior administrations or prior zoning bylaws, A P properties, and even we have unserviced properties in the River Valley area and Levine area that have the R1 designation, which don't have any services at all. I don't know whether there's any preclusion, but in our zoning bylaw, we do have specifications for R1s, fully serviced, R1 partially serviced, R1 unserviced, which changes the lot size. So I don't know if there's any actual rule that you can't, but you do have to have different specifications as to whether or not they are in your service areas or not.
Any more questions? So I have a question and probably some comments. So when we spoke last about this, we talked about removing the portion of Lennon land, if we were going to call it that. And my thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was going to go from north of Levac Road, off Arcan Road, up to the highway for about three or four houses wide is what I was told, or what we were explaining, correct? And now what I'm seeing is we're going all the way from Booth Road all the way to Arcan Road. So I guess my confusion is the official plans everywhere are pushing for agricultural land, and now all of a sudden we have two beautiful agricultural sites that we're just going to decide to put it rural. So that's my concern, one. I don't understand why that's not remaining agricultural when we're changing all of Werner and making it agricultural. And again, and I might be wrong, some individuals might clarify it for me, but I thought at the meeting we had discussed that we would take the chunk of the Lennon land and go this, about the same width, north to the highway, about four or five houses from Arcan East. That's what I thought we had discussed. Okay. Just, I remember somebody mentioning, because I was confused at that time too, it was from Levac to the highway. And I thought it was just a certain width. So I guess that was my question, if that's what we had discussed, and if nobody else remembers, that's fine. That was just my thought, because that's what, so when I saw this. So anyways, I guess my comment is, I don't understand why we're, with the official plan, we're pushing so much for the agricultural and then all of a sudden, like, we have two beautiful spots that are fantastic for farming right now and we're just going to take it
Thank you. Well, my opinion of that would be that it's two agricultural fields that are near services and I think we need housing more than we need two more farmers' fields. And not everyone wants to necessarily build a house in Sturgeon Falls or in Werner. And, you know, I think it's an incredibly small part of the agricultural lands that we have in West Nipissing and it has water right next to it, then if, you know, we have to leave the door open for that to be subdivided and used for building houses. We're desperate for houses.
So, and on that note, I don't disagree. There's a big field in front of the school in Cache Bay that would be beautiful for housing. If you continue on that road, on the left side of Levac Road, there's a massive field that has all the amenities and still would be fantastic for housing. Right? And I understand what you're saying, but if you come to the, at the Committee of Adjustment and the Planning Committee meetings, we have the agricultural...
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee and also the OFMAH...
OFA.
That attended, the president and the vice president that would disagree with you about the agriculture, the farming line, because they're pushing to keep the farmlands. And I understand what you're saying, a hundred percent. But to them, so but to add to that, there's plenty more rooms in Cache Bay itself, because only, and I say Cache Bay only because we're talking about Cache Bay, that is prime for development.
Madam Chair. When it came, that, the area that you're speaking about actually came to both the Agricultural Advisory Committee and had a letter drafted by OFA that supported keeping that within residential stock because the difference between that piece of property and the other agricultural pieces of property that have been discussed in Committee of Adjustment and Planning Advisory Committee is that it has access to municipal services or close access to municipal services, which changes the density that you could build to and whether or not it's suitable for urban development. And so that, both the Agricultural Advisory Committee, when they met with landscape and our municipal planners, agreed and actually pushed for these properties to be removed from the agricultural designation because of the access to services. So that's the difference, is that it's actually amenable to a more dense urban residential development than farmland when you look in Werner or whatever, because it does have access to both water or close access to both water and sewer services.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's what they do down south. That was my question to the last planner in 2006, how can we get several pieces of land here? Well, they needed that south to extend that out, so it's almost the same idea. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move to 5.2.2 Camping Trailer Regulation, Consultation, sorry.
I just like that. Sorry, I made a mistake at the start of the meeting, I declared a bit carrying your interest here. It's happened in the past for the trailer regulation, so I'll submit the opinion.
Did you? I guess I did.
I'll pass it to you, Mr. Brogo, if I may.
I think the, you have a memo before you that talked about, I think it was in your term plan, I'm not sure anymore, things have gone on, looking at regulating trailers or licensing trailers where they're on vacant land and, you know, possibly creating some issues. I think actually talked about the fact that we're probably the only municipality that doesn't have any regulatory framework for trailers on vacant land. And so I think there's a planning issue, but it's also a licensing issue with respect to general government. And so we talked about revisiting that as part of the term plan. But there was also a discussion about public consultation, and so we were coming back. Apologize for the delay, but we, you know, have other files. And so we're proposing here, I suppose, a, some public consultation. I will probably stick my neck up a little further, going that we have an exhaustive consultation on the first go around. I'm not a hundred percent sure that the outcome would be any different than the information that would have been received in the past. We have certain jurisdictions that were very much against any regulation. We had some commonality with respect to everybody having a need to protect the environment, having some commonality with respect to certain setbacks. We didn't necessarily have total agreement with respect to licensing and fees and so on and so forth, but we had, we had enough consultation. So in this session, given our availability as well, we're probably recommending streamlining that a little bit more and having two open house sessions and one in Werner and one in Field, and then also having an electronic web format that we can use as well. And we would be looking at what I just indicated, licensing, maximum numbers of permitted trailers, locations of trailers, sanitary service requirements. And the meetings would be scheduled for September in order to provide ample notice and allow for staff to actually attend them. So, you know, so that's where we're at now, assuming the council still wants to proceed with the trailer, potential trailer bylaw. And if council wants to shelve it, that's okay too. I leave it to council.
Thank you, Mr. Bro. Any questions or comments? Monsieur, you on you?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the reason for Field and Werner is that because most complaints came from that area? Is that why you're doing the open session there?
Well, it's kind of a, it's kind of a central, central kind of area where it's rural. You know, we can put it in Levine and, you know, capture Wardy, residents of Werner come in. Most of the sessions were very well-attended. It was extremely well-attended in River Valley. They were very well-attended in Field and also Werner. And did we do one in Levine? Yeah. And so we're just trying to streamline and be accessible for the most, you know, the most people that can attend without having to do, I mean, you know, if council so directs is fine, but I'm telling you, I don't know that there's a ton of added value in doing six again. And I think it's just, you know, it's a real drain on our resources to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other comments? Monsieur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think this is a very big issue and it involves every resident in my area in the field. Like the CEO said, Field was very well-attended, River Valley was very well-attended. So to say that we're going to fit all the residents of River Valley that attended into Field, there's no room for that. So, and also this is new council that did those sessions, except for me. I think it would be very educational for everyone to listen to what our resident that elected us, to listen to what they have to say. So I would suggest that we repeat the same thing that we did before and that way everyone here around this table will have a clear understanding of what the people want, because this affects everyone. It doesn't affect only two community. It affects every community in West Nipissing. So I would, I would say that we should do the same consultation we did before and then move forward with that.
Thank you. Counselor Crystal?
Three, Mr. Chair, I have a different opinion on it. I think we can consult till we're blue in the face. If we've done every community already, it's probably a lot of the same comments that we're going to receive. I know we weren't sitting there. We do have the comments and reports. That's an opportunity to re-engage with some constituents. And if it's important enough that everybody wants to participate, they can. Having the online option is another option for everybody to participate in, no matter where you are. But I think we already have reports, we already have comments. This is probably going to reiterate a lot of the same things that have already been shared, if it's done, if it has been done extensively in the past. And I think as well, we're getting in again, go back to staff and their time, where we'll be entering on top of already having all the information, most of the information. We're going to be getting into budget time again, using a very valuable member of the team at the end of the fiscal year as well, or calendar year, I should say. And, you know, the more we can focus on different things that we need to get done while still focusing on those things as well, I'd be supportive of what's being recommended and have the two sessions and combine those with what's already been collected through previous consultations. And I think we're, we're going to get a good view of what individuals are looking for through this. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Monsieur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oui, j'étais là quand on a passé dans toutes les classes, forever Field, Levine, Werner, Sturgeon, puis c'était très bien attendu. Il y avait du monde, pas mal de monde à chaque classe. Je m'imagine que ça va être encore plus, c'est incite, parce que c'est le même montant de monde qu'il y avait deux jours, plus des nouveaux, peut-être avec des idées différentes que la dernière fois. Oui, j'aimerais entendre les différentes options qu'on va avoir, mais je voudrais faire certain que si on fait juste ça, Field ou Werner, qu'il y a cette base que tout le monde... Je pense qu'il y avait des classes, mais si on peut trouver une situation où une option qui pénifie et qui peut faire certain avec la... Si on voit qu'il y a une demande qui est plus grande, on peut en faire une deuxième. Mais je peux vous dire très franchement que dans le mois de septembre, avec mes derniers trois mois, faire un objet avec les défi qu'on a, je peux pas garantir que le demandant... J'ai essayé aussi comme ça. J'en ai fait un peu, Crystal Falls, ainsi de suite, mais il y a beaucoup, tu sais, il y a beaucoup d'affaires à faire ça. C'est ma préférence. Si je pensais que l'information serait différente pour faire une décision, mais je pense pas que ça va être différent. Je pense que c'est très évident, ensemble des communautés, ce que vous avez, c'est ma préférence. Et ça s'est rajouté, on connaît déjà, on remet ça au conseil, c'est en fait le conseil.
Monsieur. Monsieur. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with having a legal framework because there are issues that need to be addressed, definitely. But I'll say again what I've said before. Unless we take a more proactive approach to enforcement, I feel it is pointless because it's only, it's only going to be another, I mean, you just have to look at how many CCANS we have in the urban area of Sturgeon Falls. We have, we have probably 200 short-term rentals in West Nipissing. We have 13 licenses issued. And adding another bylaw to our books that is just going to be ignored is just going to fuel the, the people just thinking that they can do whatever they like. So we have to, we have to start looking at how we will start enforcing bylaws, especially now that we have AMPs and we don't have to rely on... and we don't have to rely on the DOA. So that's my thought.
Can I comment? I don't think it's a matter of our unwillingness to enforce bylaw. I think it's a resource issue. But I do agree with your point that unless we have the resources to enforce these bylaws, they, they're pointless. But we have one and a half bylaw enforcement officers. We have bylaw enforcement officers right now that are on leave. We have to appoint a fire chief to actually manage and, you know, by, bylaws. So to your point, unless council wishes to really get into the enforcement of bylaws and providing the resources necessary, then yeah, perhaps you wish to postpone this and have a discussion at budget with respect to enhancing your bylaws first. Build your capacity first and then deal with this after.
Thank you, Consigliere. Madam Mary?
I would just support Counselor Faddeh's statement there on saying, more to your point, that we are not resourced for bylaw enforcement of a municipality of our population or of our geographic area at one and a half officers for this entire area. When you look at property standards, when you look at animal control, when you look at short-term rental, when you look at all of the different bylaws, you know, parking. You know, when we get into our winter parking and our bylaw enforcement officers have to get up at three o'clock in the morning to ticket people and get them out of the way for our snowplows. One and a half officers is not, is not enough. It's not enough. It doesn't do the job here. And I mean, we're, I think that we've taken leaps and bounds because we all know that when we started this term, there was zero. So, you know, like we have, we have moved towards that, but I, I tend to agree that to create another bylaw that we do not have the resources to, to send out and, and enforce, we may be putting the cart before the horse. And I will also say that, you know, we have, we have a lot of other items that are, shall we say, that staff are actively working on. And that, that list is long as well. And so, you know, like to, to have an, this is a big undertaking, not just the public consultations. But, you know, when it comes back to council, after the consultations, there will be significant debate. If we thought the chickens took a long time, we can expect that we, we will spend a long, long time on discussing the ins and outs of trailers and what that looks like, what's fair, what's reasonable and what's enforceable. And so I, I just don't know whether we're putting the cart before the horse on this at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Consigliere Nichol?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I understand that we did the consultations in the other areas before, but I still think it's important to go there again, just because a lot has changed since 2019 and that people might think differently or feel differently. So I would like to propose we do all of the areas again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I guess before we decide if we're willing to go to all the other areas first and so on, I believe Consigliere Faddeh brought up that he would like to see it put aside. And Madam Mary, I believe, is of the same mindset that currently we have enough on the plate to, on our staff and we don't have the resources, not even close, to deal with the bylaws that we're facing and working on right now. So I'd like to see maybe a show of hands that this situation with the camping trailer is put aside. I would say maybe for four to six months and come back at that point in time. So maybe in the new year. And that we visited, we visit it then. And however, to definitely come back to us. Because we do need to maybe try to put something together before next summer to get something in place. Consigliere Faddeh?
Oui, j'avais une question. Quand on va aller faire le tour, on a eu un draft à monter au résident?
On avait une époche, oui, à montrer au résident, oui. C'est vraiment la préparation, mais avant qu'on ait une époche, il y avait quelque chose, je pense que ça serait, c'est prévu là-dessus que le personnel fait une époche de quelque chose. Vous savez, en termes de, qu'est-ce que vous voulez maintenant? Après ça, voulez-vous consulter? Parce que ça va pas être mon personnel qui va créer une époche sans avoir, c'est quoi la position de l'époche? Alors, you know, we can, we can put options and, and put a draft bylaw and just take everybody off. But if it isn't, you know, if you've already got preconceived notions on a draft, then we can do it that way as well.
C'est, ça serait ça mon point de compte. Si on est pas fait quelque chose de mal, on commence avec light. Tu sais, en fait quelque chose qui est pas over, c'est comme faire des chickens, mais c'est, donc on va y passer. So on pourrait commencer avec quelque chose de light, mais après ça, rien qui nous empêche de, dans un air de, ok, il y a quelque chose qui va pas bien, qu'on met ça plus ou whatever. Juste attendre, pas moyen de partir un peu.
Consigliere? Madam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to draw now. For now, we've got a lot of things on the plate. Let's put this aside and bring it the new year or next council or whatever.
Any other comments? Monsieur Faddeh?
Thank you. Just to follow up, that may be, the next discussion we need to have is at budget time. And do we, do we ramp up our capacity in terms of bylaw enforcement? And do we, do we start looking at AMPs as, I mean, I, I always saw AMPs as a game changer. I mean, prior to having AMPs, bylaw enforcement was a direct cost and there was no benefit to it financially. Now it's different. I mean, if, if we can find, if, if we can impose fines and make it a revenue stream, then it will pay for the bylaws. So that's the, the next discussion is a discussion we need to have at budget time.
We, through you, Mr. Chair, we intend to, based on this, based on our, our realities, what we're going through operationally, we shall be bringing a proposal for probably doubling our FTEs with respect to bylaw.
Thank you. So I guess just with a show of hands, I, I, would we, would we be in agreement to move this into the next year after our budget? I wouldn't want to see it at the next council. I would rather see it dealt with us next year. And like I said, hopefully before the summer. And we'll go from there. So we'll show hands with moving this process forward. Okay, that's carried. And that's it on my end.
Okay, thank you. We're just a little past our initial break time. So we'll have a motion for recess, please, Madam Chair. We'll call it. Sorry, 8:05. I need to move on a second or please. Saint Louis, address to us, please.
Please move, my Counselor Stanley, and second, my Counselor Resto. At approximately 8:05 PM, a motion was tabled for a winner basis on my favor.
Good evening and welcome back to our Council Committee of the Whole meeting. We're in the middle of our Committee of the Whole. Council Rebar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to propose a change in our agenda. I know it's not the time, but maybe just out of being kind to our be our crowd here tonight. A lot of them are here for number 6.4.3 Whole's Resolution on that's that. And I believe just with the next discussion is coming, they're going to be pretty lengthy. And if we could potentially boost those up so that we can get to bed at about 3:30.
Okay, so Council Rebar is putting a motion on the floor that we deal with item 6.4.3 before we continue our Committee of the Whole discussions in community services and sewer and water. I need a second or for that motion, Council Fere. Any questions or comments on the motion that's on the floor? Okay, all in favor? That's carried. So with the permission of Council, we will move to item 6.4.3. And Madam Park has resolution?
It is moved by Council Rebar and seconded by Council Paline. Whereas at a meeting on June 17, 2025, Council received a staff report outlining options to address the road encroachment issues along the Cramen Azulak. And whereas Council supported proceeding with option two being a land exchange and road allowance closure as a practical and cost effective solution, be it therefore resolved that Council direct staff to take all the necessary steps to implement option two, including land negotiations, road allowance closures, and preparation of required legal documentation. And further, that staff report back to Council with updates and any required approvals to complete the process.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. You can thank Council Rebar for that.
They can stay.
You can stay. It's going to be okay. We're going to talk about Goulard Park next. Okay, I don't, just don't want to make it happen.
Yeah, maybe just in the summer months. I'd like to propose that we move forward 6.2.3 for the same reason. We have one lone crowd member.
6.2.3 or two, now or Laver?
Laver.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor from Council Rebar, 6.2.3. To be moved ahead of our continued committee of the whole meeting. Can I get a second or? Council St. Louis?
It is moved.
Oh, sorry, all in favor? Carried?
It is moved by Council Larabee and seconded by Council Fere. Be it resolved the bylaw number 202559 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445 to rezone certain lands located at 234 Laver Drive from Shoreline Residential to Shoreline Residential, exception zone 22, shall come into force and take effect on the day this passed.
Questions or comments? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll resume our Committee of the Whole. We move on to 5.4. No, sorry, we'll move on to item 5.4, which is community services. For that, I will pass the floor to our Chair, Council Rebar.
I gave myself difficulty how I just. So number 5.4.1 is the community services capital options. There's a very extensive report here regarding Goulard Park baseball fields, Mini Ha Ha Bay Wharf rehabilitation, Burner Municipal Building repairs and renovations, and the West Niff St. Rex Center. It's a whole hall of the arena. We'll go through one by one, I guess, and we can discuss. Or would you prefer to speak to anything off the bat? Mr. Chair?
It's up to Council, Mr. Chair. Like I did mention in the memo, we will be coming back with more detailed information for the Wharf repair, the Burner Municipal Building, and the recommendation for the renovations at the Sturgeon Falls complex. Just to basically hope that the province will be coming out with more funding. But the other two priorities, Burn and the Wharf, we will be looking at providing financing options as funding or grants are limited at this time. As the memo explains, I did provide Council with an overview of the different options for the baseball fields at Goulard Park. There is a recommendation provided to Council. And we're looking obviously for direction, whether we move with option one, two, or three, and then to provide the approval that we can submit an application to NOHFC.
Thank you. So yeah, we'll start with the Goulard Park. And then I guess we could start right off the bat with if we approve applying to the NOHFC, right? Because all three options do show an NOHFC component. Some would be maximizing, options two and three would be maximizing the NOHFC grant. And option one would be maximizing, but we can still receive a portion. So we could most likely just start with if we approve for staff to move forward with that application. Questions or comments regarding that?
Just on that, one of the items on the addendum for this evening, 6.4.7, is to authorize an NOHFC application for that. So that will, I mean, we can discuss in theory whether we're lucky to approve it, but that resolution is already on the agenda for later in the evening. Thank you.
Well, I think it might be connected in the sense that if you're discussing it at committee right now, you're looking at options that would be comprised of the application for NOHFC. So I believe the time is now to discuss that. Yeah, so the, you know, so there's an assumption that, and I'm just going to take a leap of faith that I don't think, I would probably bet a good deal of money that Council is not against applying for free money. Right, so then it's, you know, it's just what you want to do, what options do we do? And that's where the Director has indicated the third option. And again, we're recommending, hey, you know, this council had wanted to have certain projects in terms of community enhancement and so forth. And, you know, we had a discussion at the staff level with respect to, you know, oh, well, you know, we're tight this, that, and the other thing. And but then we said, you know what? If we have a Goulard Park vision and we have lights and everything, let's make the lighted Goulard Park option work. It can have additional benefits to concerts and other issues as well. So, you know, that's why we're looking at option three with the lights. And then coming back to you with the more information at the next meeting with respect to a financing arrangement to cover the differences on all of the projects. And those financing arrangements will involve, as the memo indicates, a recommendation for addressing all of the Burner issues and Mini Ha Ha Bay as well.
Do you have a comment there, Madam Mayor?
I'll wait till you open the floor.
Okay, yeah, we'll open the floor just to speak about Goulard Park in general. As mentioned, it has been amended for option three, and there are these benefits that are explained and some potential risks as well. So if you haven't really seen those, maybe they'll come up in the discussion. But I'd like to just open the floor as to, you know, we can eventually vote on which option we'd like to explore more as Council. Mr. Chair, just one bit of information for Council to consider as well.
We had, so field number one, we had applied for funding through the Fields of Dream and were successful. The cost to rehabilitate field number one only is $443,000. We knew we weren't going to get 100% funding. We originally had applied for both fields, but the Blue Jays Care Foundation only supported the rehabilitation of one field. But at budget last November, we did, Council did agree to set as part of the 2025 capital budget $301,000 for baseball field rehabilitation.
$292,000.
$292,000, sorry, yeah, yeah. $292,000 we had originally budgeted. So taking that into consideration, if Council wishes to go with an option that requires additional funding, we have a balance in reserve. If we take the $292 out, if I'm not mistaken, we have a balance in capital reserve for community services of $1,080,000 that will be untapped this year. If you recall, we also had another project that we had applied funding for, and that was the pool rehabilitation that got declined. So that money, we had earmarked $1,090,000 for that project. That was the municipal portion, if we would have gotten a million dollar contribution from the province. So that, obviously, that funding will not go ahead this year, or that project will not go ahead this year. So I just wanted to add that information.
So if we're, if we're just starting on the budget pieces, there were two other capital, and I'm going off memory because I didn't look it up. There were two other capital projects in regards to some AODA projects at both the museum and the North Monette Hill Community Center, I believe. Have those been put up to tender or any work initiated on those to date?
No, none at all.
Okay, so there's also, I believe that was, I'm going to guess at 2.5.
What, sorry?
I think that there was 225. Was it 125 or two? I think it was 225. I think it was 112, 500 for each facility in the budget that was approved. And I am going off memory.
I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds.
Okay, just, so because that's, that's also, so that's not part of that 10, or sorry, $1,080,000?
But is the intention to go forward?
No.
I think they came out of the budget and.
Yeah, we had removed those projects from the budget.
They were not approved at budget?
No, they, because we didn't have the funds and applications were pending, that we retracted those two projects, that they're not part of the capital project moving forward for this year.
Okay. I don't, I don't remember. I'm not saying.
If I'm not mistaken, that's, I think, what happened. I think they came completely off the list of approved capital projects to move forward this year. That's what I believe happened, but we can double check.
Yeah, no, they came off the list.
They did, yeah.
Okay, so.
No, that's okay. Council, same.
Thank you. So going to the Goulard Park project. I think that option three is fantastic idea. The only question I guess I have is, there's 100, estimated $100,000 potential revenue from Pidu's land. Why is that $100,000 not in option one and two? Is it because we wouldn't get rid of the ballpark at Pidu's if we, like, if we do option two and redo a field two, will we not get rid of Pidu's regardless?
So our opinion is that we need at least two lit fields for softball to be able to support the need from the community. And so by not having lights at field number two at Goulard, it would be tough to be able to meet the group's needs for scheduling. The other benefit highlighted as well, if we have two lit fields in one location, makes it much more attractive to host larger events, larger tournaments, than having to split your event in two. That's why we didn't include the revenue, because we proposed to keep the lit field at Pidu's operational.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on the Pidu thing, the $100,000 estimate, that is if the if the property is sold all at one to one developer. And the municipal property starts just after the building? Like the, or is there, is there land that somebody else is there as well? Sorry.
So through you, Mr. Chair, there's a apartment building, and then next to it is where we start.
Okay.
And we have like a storage facility there, like a storage garage. There's also a playground. And then we'd sever the remaining portion where the ball field lies to a developer, hopefully create some residential lots.
Is the intention to, would be to sell the entire parcel of municipally owned land on that road or just where the ball field sits?
Just where the ball field sits.
Assumption is that, you know, still has some recreation and some use for that geographic area.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering that as well. Maybe the whole property that we discussed later on. But yeah, I did wonder too, 100,000, because I always thought it was the whole property. But with the park there, I guess that's why it's just a field portion. Any more questions or comments? Council, you on here?
Are we repurposing the lights at Pidu's to bring to field two? It's $500,000 to put lights at field number two. Is that the cost estimate to put lights?
That's what we got from a Class D cost estimate from our architect. You have to appreciate that what we plan for lights is similar to what's existing at field one. There are steel posts, they have to be dug, there has to be proper footing. So I was also surprised to see the cost, but that is exactly what we got from our consultant. And they've compared with recent baseball fields built in other locations. And to have proper electrical, proper posts, proper lighting, that's the cost to have new lights installed.
But can we, couldn't we repurpose the lights at Pidu's?
They're, they're saying that putting just regular, like hydro poles is not an option that they would recommend. They're talking steel, steel poles with proper footing and lights on top.
Okay, thank you.
I'll see. I'll see.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, they see why they wouldn't recommend that?
Not necessarily why. I'd have to go back and ask the specific question, but I remember having a discussion pertaining to what they've seen done elsewhere. I know we use the hydro poles for outdoor rings, but baseball. I know we use the hydro poles for outdoor rings, but baseball lighting is much different as well. I think, I don't know if it's got to be higher or whatnot, but it's something we can go back to, but I'm convinced if they provided, they didn't provide us with lighting options, they provided with one construction scenario, and they did talk about them costing out the footings, the, the poles, and, and the lighting system and the electrical components to go with it.
Thank you. Conseiller Bala.
Uh, excuse, yes, I'd like to check that out, if we could put the poles in, because you can get any size of poles, which would be, I imagine, a lot cheaper.
Thank you. Kind to agree with Conseiller Bala. I know that the skating rink, you're, you're, you're doing the whole skating rink with the lights all around for $50,000, so it, it would be, I'd be curious to see, you know, if we could do it cheaper than what they recommend.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is the intention to keep the current placement of the fields and directions, or would you shift it? Like, to me, it would make more sense if they kind of, to the two-quarter circles made a half circle, I'm just looking at the, the way it's laid out now, like, is the intent to try to maximize the, the use of space there? Or is it to rebuild them as they are right now in the location and the directions that they face?
So through you, Mr. Chair, Field One has to stay because the light poles are all in place, so the footprint of Field Number One has to stay the way it is right now.
Can you tell me if Field One is John and?
Correct, yeah, the backstop faces, it backs onto John Street, that's Field Number One, yeah. That's the one that we're redoing with the Blue Jays Care Foundation funding. That one already has set electrical that runs to every pole, the poles are already set, so we're upgrading the lights, but we're, but there's, I mean, if we're gonna remove the poles, it'd be a brand-new reconstruction. Our architect did say, did say that there's probably a different way to position Field Number Two for safety reasons, to try to move it as far from the road that you take it, there's no danger to that road. But it's that road off Corcel that goes into the complex. We're gonna have to look at that safety netting too, so that balls aren't flying from one field to the next, but he did mention that he would certainly look at efficiencies and reposition Field Number Two as best as possible.
Yeah. Is there a, it's part of the plan to demolish the field house as well? Is there any plans to rebuild the field house or some kind of storage facility for user groups?
Yeah, there will be a storage facility, not necessarily right behind the backstop, we need to decommission the existing, this existing building because it's exceeded its life, or, or life expectancy. However, the electrical is housed in that building, so we will have standalone, so that's part of the cost of Field Number One, which is at 443, is to basically take the electrical component and put it in a secure standalone panel, and then have a small storage facility so that we can store baseball equipment in onsite.
Conseiller Bala.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You were talking about taking out those lights and replacing those lights. Those lights, could we keep them at, at the municipal store? Because we could do other projects like the Cash Bay basketball field, these could be transferred over there instead of, you know, the contractor picking it and taking it away. It could be used somewhere else.
The reason we're changing it is because they're halogen, they're not energy efficient, and they're, they're, I don't know how many years they are, so we're looking at going to an energy efficient lighting, replacing them to LED, more effective, more efficient, more cost savings. If council's wish to repurpose those lights, we can look at any option, but our recommendation would be if they're good for a basketball court in Cash Bay, we should just leave them there at the baseball field, but we feel that, since we're gonna be redoing the field, we might as well go with better lighting options.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a comment, yeah, the LED would probably pay for themselves on the long run.
Thank you. So, yeah, I just, after looking as well, I kind of thought that it seemed high as well, but then when you start looking at, you know, the Field of Dreams, the Pidus land, otherwise we can't sell the land, and then the potential for that NOHFC, it does come up to about $200,000 more than we would have, than we had at the start of the year. This way, you're consolidating assets into one location, it's, you're completing phase one of Goulard Park, which has been talked about for almost a decade now, you know, so there finally would be movement. It will cost money, there's no doubt about it. We have some opportunity at some grants or some savings by consolidating our assets and applying for these grants. We have two brand-new assets in our municipality that we probably don't have to maintain for 20, 30 years, because those fields, I think, have been the exact same since I used to be a little guy there, so they're at least 30 years old. But just most importantly, just revitalizing that Goulard Park area, slowly building it back up, this is a good first step, with that John Street being reconstructed and Corcel being redone with the sidewalk that was approved in the past, it would look very good in the municipality, right in a core location like that. So I am in full support of moving forward with option three with my fingers crossed that that NOHFC comes through, and then if it does come through, it's, it's kind of, what is it, 50 cents to the dollar, not even, right? That it would cost us for two brand-new assets, which then save you also the maintenance cost of sending staff to Pidus just to cut the grass, and that field will also need money coming up. So if you build a brand-new, then we can, we're kind of, we've been looking at doing this for a while, right, selling off some assets to be able to maintain what we currently have or increase what we have, and this is kind of the perfect option. But option two seemed really interesting, but yeah, without the lights, I've spoken with some people, and most adult league games are very late, so then we would still have to probably keep Pidus just so that they could play their games, right? So that's just my comments regarding it, but we'll have to see a show of hands unless other people have comments or questions or. Madam Mayor?
All right, just one more question. In budget this year, we approved the design, sorry, this is probably one for Miss Amy, we had approved the design work for Corcel from John to wherever, then.
Yes.
Is that still, so is the design work being completed? We're still on track to do the actual capital project as part of next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay, so that would coincide with.
Budget-dependent, but yes, the design will be complete.
The design will be complete, so it will come to council at budget time, and, and that includes sidewalks and a similar design to the John Street.
Yes, yeah, we're looking at something similar, so what's on John Street with the parking?
And this is the parking, and, okay.
Thanks.
Say, well, just one question to Monsieur Plé, how many poles has to go up for the second field, for the lights?
I've had the number of poles, I don't know, but they'd be similar to the first field, I assume, because you have to have directional lighting to cover the entire field.
And how many is there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven or eight, maybe nine.
Yeah, right. Before I make a decision, I'd like to know if we go with the wooden pole, because I guarantee it's gonna be half the price.
Sure, but I don't know the justification of why they wouldn't have provided that option, because, I mean, our consultant generally is very practical when he gives us options, so I'll check with them and see. That's what I'm thinking too, but it could be a height situation, that you've got to go higher, and the higher you go, the more, the better your footings have to be. We'll, we'll ask the questions to the experts, and we'll get council the information if you so wish.
Because we are always thinking of our two little roofs at the arena at Burner and their bridge on the Eugene Road, so that's what that's.
We're, we're always thinking risk, liability to public safety, yeah. So when you're looking at lit fields and you've got activity happening, we've just got to make sure they're properly lit, or else we're exposing ourselves to, to potential risks, so it's all about risk management. But if there's a rationale, and if, if our consultant says, yeah, we can do height and we can meet all restrictions or all specifications using wooden poles, and it comes in at half the price, then obviously we'll look at it. But Field Number One, you know, there, there won't be much consistency there, we've got Field Number One as, as with steel poles, but that's, that's besides the point.
And I do believe, like, it's a, it's a great question, I do believe the question at hand right now is option one, would we only do Field One? Option two, would we do Field One and Field Two with no lights? Or option three, would we do both fields with lights? So then it is an estimated cost, but yeah, maybe we can look at the different options, but still making a decision, I think we'll have to stick with just kind of the basic, what are these three options, right, with an estimated cost? And then just as an idea for rationale, I wonder if you smash a ball, fly a ball 150 feet in the air and smash a light, I wonder, maybe that's why they have to be higher up there as well. Sorry, Conseiller, stand up and counsel us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counselor Bala, you know, we, we pay for consultants' advice, but the consultant's advice has, has to be clear and justified, because I, for one, as a counselor, will not take their advice wholesale unless I understand their reasoning behind it. Because it, eventually, it's us that is making the decision, and it's us that has to justify our decisions to the public, and if we don't know the reason behind it, then how can we make a decision properly? So it's very important that when we get advice from consultants, that explain their reason.
Thank you. Counselor Russell.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I really think what's being proposed in front of us today is kind of, to a good extent, irregardless of what the posts look like, I think the cost, even if you take that amount off of the total cost, we're still, I think, part of the decision tonight is to get approvals so that our staff can get proposals in, to get the big chunks of these funding. It doesn't matter if the poles cost 500 or 50 or 150, the value's still gonna be 500 that we're applying for through NOHFC. I think that can probably be changed or looked at in the future, I would think, but I think the request, if we're looking at 50% from NOHFC, irregardless of what we go with for posts, it's still gonna be over that threshold. And I'd support option three as well, because I don't know if this is why, we used to play ball back in the day, a couple of councils are on the table here, a couple of staff, but I think when you don't have those lights, then you see that second field depreciate because it's used less, and people, and you can just drive by and see it right now, right? People are always on Field One, nobody's on Field Two, it's basically a grass fetal. If we're gonna consolidate things, I'd support number three, so we have two sets of lights there, it's a central location for both activity, both, you know, games being played there, tournaments, whatnot. But I don't think, in my opinion, it doesn't make a difference if we go with wooden or steel poles, I'd still go with option three, and we're still gonna be applying for the same amount, just going back to our staff members' earlier comment that there's a, a need to make a decision now because of timelines, we gotta get these applications in, so I don't think we, we're in a position where we can wait to hear back from a consultant to get a different cost, and we're probably gonna miss deadlines, if that's what we're doing. So I'd support number three regardless of what the posts look like.
Counselor Russell. Madam Mayor, sorry.
Thank you. As far as the way that the design placement of the two fields would fit in with the overall vision for Goulard Park from way back in the day, I'm just thinking about the trail, right? Like, and I'm thinking about if, if we're using this as a, as a step one to further improvements throughout the park over the course of several years, given the designs that you've seen, and I can't remember the layout, is there still room for that kind of perceived walking trail around where that is? Mr. Chair.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, the consultant that we're working with on the baseball projects is the same consultant that prepared the conceptual plan for Goulard Park. So he understands the plan, he had a key role to play in, and not the first rendition, because that was J.L. Richards, but the second one he worked on, he under, he, he looked at all the public consultation, the requests, the requirements, so I'm sure that that will be taken into account when defining the, the, where, where the, the second field is positioned. With that being said, the Goulard Development Project Concept Plan is, is that, it's a plan, and it could be evolving into something else in the future, but we'll certainly position the ball fields if its council's wish to ensure that we maximize the use of the space and, and not interfere with the original concept.
So, I believe we've spoken quite a bit. Would we be able to buy a show of hands? Who would be in favor of the recommendation provided, presented by staff for both fields lit and to kind of apply for that funding, right? Because if we don't approve the apply, apply for the funding, potentially that would even be a topic. Come back to that at a more formal time later on in the meeting for the NOHFC, but just who would be in favor of option three to reconstruct Field One and Two with lights? That's, that's a majority. And I was just wondering, as to what Counselor Bala was mentioning, Monsieur Russell, like, it does mention at one point that the lights will most likely be done only next spring or next year because of timelines issues, so maybe that does allow staff to move forward and look at options, and maybe have a clause in the plan to, you know, change the type of pole if that really does make a big difference, and if it doesn't, or if consultants stick to it, then at least we just move forward, we'll have two brand-new fields with same lights on each field, and that'll be dealt with. But thank you for that, and we'll move forward to the Mini Ha Ha Bay rehabilitation project. A lot of this stuff, we're gonna get more information in the August, correct?
The other projects, yes, we'll come, we'll come back with options and especially some financing options if council wishes to proceed with these projects.
So I'll just open up the floor for any questions or comments for any three of these, so the Mini Ha Ha Bay Warf Rehabilitation, the Burner Municipal Building, Paris and Reno's, and the West Nipson Recreation Center, so the pool, Solnohal, the arena, and, or would you prefer that we just wait completely for?
Hard question, try to address them.
Conseiller Bala.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, Class D estimate, c'est quoi?
Class D, c'est, on demande au consultant de nous donner une estimation basée sur des standards dans l'industrie pour la construction, puis Class D, ça veut dire, c'est normalement plus ou moins 20% le prix. Quand tu demandes un Class A, so they're gonna cost out everything from door handles to everything, a Class A is, is almost to a point accurate, but it's way more expensive to get a Class A, a Class A estimate than a Class D. Class D, there's variances, but they go by what they know industry standards of costing today. Oui, c'est ça. Et c'est qu'ils font souvent les consultants, si ils vont regarder, ils vont faire des appels, ils vont parler à d'autres consultants qui viennent de passer à travers de la construction de des projets similaires, puis pour essayer d'avoir le détail le plus précis des faits d'aujourd'hui.
Conseiller, your question, I was wondering the same thing to anyone else. No, so we'll receive, oh.
Hold on, I have two comments, one on Mini Ha Ha Bay, and it's a comment, not a criticism. It hurts to think about spending $4 million on a project that on the surface looks like there's nothing wrong with it. I, I just want to put that out there, if you go down to Mini Ha Ha Bay and you walk the boardwalk, you know, from all outside appearances, it's, it's a beautiful place. And so it, it just kind of hurts to have to grapple with a $4 million expenditure that once it's done, it will look no different than what, like, there will be no visible there will be no visible sign that four million dollars has been spent on the project. And that just, you know, from from community building perspective, that kinds of kind of hurts when you spend four million dollars, you kind of expect to to see something grand and uh beautiful that uh will be uh that residents will get excited about. So you know, it's kind of like spending uh money on your transmission. You know, really, it doesn't make the car look any better, at least run better. So that's here nor there, it's just it is it is kind of painful to have to think about spending. You know, physical changes. Um for the Burner Municipal Building repairs and renovations, um when the uh when this comes back at the August meeting, um will there there be several options? Because we had talked about the repairs necessary on that building and whether or not it's the most financially responsible way to continue to provide services in Burner. So when that comes back, will there be other options? As far as whether, you know, we we look at building something new in a different location or whether we look at leasing or whether like what other options are there besides fixing um as eighty year old school or however old it is?
There will be options, yeah.
Well, I mean, there will be some options, not not several options, but we were, this is based on a conversation with staff on some of the constraints we have even with existing leases uh that we are are bound to. And so uh this was a decision and a recommendation that we'll be forward, having looked at a few options.
Thank you, Counselor Bellray.
Commentaire, une question, commentaire, c'est la pire, ça proposait du workar. Il y avait là, c'est c'est, ça y est, il est fait là, il y a une école. Uh who who screwed up?
Uh so there's no one screwed up. So in two thousand and seven, there was a project that was based on funding. In two thousand and seven, they looked at the existing cribbing uh back in the day and like this this council did even with the last project to try and save money and to look at some options. Uh they looked at saying, well, it's another expected life and after providing engineer supports of another ten years or so. And so they said, okay, well, let's uh let's uh, you know, we we can live with that because the alternative would have been about two or three million dollars more than what they had. And so in order to create a fantastic project that had three phases, including building uh, you know, a park, Splash Park, building a facility that was originally supposed to be a large restaurant and it's just split into two, uh they decided to do that. So they said, you know what, the cribbing could last and it lasted eighteen years. And so now here we are. So I don't think anybody screwed up. I think the information was known and that the, you know, things don't last and you're in water, there's current and things washed away. And I understand that even uh Ms. Henning was partly involved in the consulting of it at the time. And so all of those issues were known. It's just that councils has their want to do, want to save money. And so would you have gotten an extra twenty years? Yeah, possibly. Would you have probably paid an extra four million bucks? Yeah, prob- probably. So that's just the way it is. So here you are eighteen years later and things sell. We expand infrastructure, we want to expand all kinds of things um and and create new ideas and that. Those things have a have an expected life and here we are.
Okay, ma question, ça c'est le building a peu. On va savoir des détails, c'est quoi qui a drôle avec le building?
La liste est longue.
What?
Elle est longue. Il y a pas grand chose dans le building, ça ne sera pas touché. La couverture, la brique de hall, les fenêtres vont être remplacées. Les chambres de bain faut que ça ait des standards acceptables pour accessibility. Uh il y a des rénovations à l'intérieur, le boiler faut que ça ait remplacé. La liste est longue, c'est une vieille école puis uh.
Oh, bah oui, yes.
C'est une vie de quoi?
All right.
C'est une vie de fiers.
All right.
Let's see, oh, I'll see that one.
Thank you. Uh for the uh Mini Ha Ha Bay project, could we, I guess the problem is the walkway on on the side. Could we exclude that? Take it out and just?
It's the it's the boardwalk, you take that out, all you have is a road, no one can walk. Uh I think there'll be some.
The main boardwalk.
Yes, the main boardwalk, it's the cribbing underneath the boardwalk that is now at its end life and so that has to be ripped up and 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 to provide better footing to have the boardwalk on. And there's also some major road repairs that needs to be done because we're seeing erosion and and uh we're having issues with washouts underneath the asphalt. So there's there's some issues there and it is, you know, almost twenty years in the making. But uh uh the main part of it is the cribbing underneath the boardwalk that needs to be replaced.
They need to address.
Correct. And the cribbing, I think the original cribbing uh that the boardwalk was originally, that was built over, has got to be close to forty years. And it's end, it's it's at its end of life.
Thank you.
We have, I just just so that, you know, we have been doing uh we have been shoring up the cribbing, we have it, we have been inspecting on a regular basis. We had a contract of there last two uh springs, March, when we're allowed to work there and the water is low and the ice is is solid. We have shored up the boardwalk, it is safe for public. Uh but we have opinions from engineer, it needs to be replaced and and sooner than later. And uh you know, we're we're not looking at hosting any major large community event on the boardwalk, that's for sure.
How long is that? Watch, excuse me, the length, yeah.
The length goes from the boat launch to the gas dock. I don't know the exact length, there's got to be three to two hundred and eighty to three hundred, yeah, meter.
Meters.
Well, six hundred feet, eh, I think, or?
It's about that.
Yeah, or a hundred and eighty meters, I don't know. Just I just visually know it goes from the uh the boat launch to the gas docks, yeah.
Yeah, I did see a video of them putting it in originally too, I think Molmanta or something. But we got grants from the Fed. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we are still selling gasoline from that location.
We are, it's a fully operational marina. Our slips are all sold out for the season, we are selling gas, yes.
Is there any opportunity for expanding these seasonal? Um like is there any room to to get more boats in there and increase revenues in that area?
We've looked at it, it's it would be difficult because there has to be a section uh provided to uh visitors that are visiting just daily with boats that want to access Twigs or the marina or want to take a walk downtown. So we did look, but we were advised that it would be, we'd have some constraints. What we're looking at is potentially um having a different set of uh docks for smaller vessels or or personal watercraft, sea dews, um because they are taking up slips. Um and so to additional revenue, we could be, you know, putting or limiting the number of personal watercrafts and allowing the bigger boats to uh pay for seasonal slips, but we are looking at all options, absolutely.
Counselor Bellray.
Les slip, on est sur copette c'est avec le le privé?
Uh pour être night, je sais pas les détails exactement, on a de plus en plus à rivières qui louent des 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 boats slips. On faudrait les regarder, mais on savait que on s'en allait dans une grosse période de construction. Ça fait quand même plusieurs années donc on n'a pas augmenté nos frais. Je pense une fois que la marina va être reconstruite ou le boardwalk, like on a eu plus ou moins une facilité plus adéquate, ça sera le temps de regarder nos frais de de location pour les.
C'est ça, attendre dire que c'est pas mal que tu que le privé.
All right, I see, I see, it's on, yeah, I'm looking at it, kind of thing, then. Let me ask around over there, keep it, man, so.
Des fois, ils vont. Ça a été dit, ça fait plusieurs années qu'on est à capacité. On a l'attente souvent, ça n'est pas une bonne année.
Was that it for the question period for? All right, we'll close that and uh I'll send it back over to you. Uh, my.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll move on to item five point five, which is our sewer water committee. I'll pass it over to our chair, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess we want to discuss uh two things. Possibility of uh some filters for trial and supplying some uh water, but there is a. That's about it, Mr. Chair.
Um so I don't think I need to go over the issues from Burner again. Um out of the proposed measures on the on this list, only items one and two are currently in this year's budget. So anything that council wants to look at above and beyond that um would be, we would have to find some money for that. Um and it's. It's about you how how you would like for us to proceed with with this. We are still hoping to get this grant and move forward obviously with a new water source. Um installing temporary inline filters may work, it may not. I want to look at like a sample set of houses if you're going to do something like that. I'm I'm not sure how you control who gets that, so. I'll I'll leave it to council to discuss some questions.
I I'd like to propose something, so I I talked about it last last meeting in Burner. Uh I know you mentioned here like supplying a bottle of waters. I don't think it's the way to go, but I would like to see maybe uh people able to come to Sturgeon and have somewhere that they can fill out the the big bottles that you buy at the store. That's that would be a cheap alternative. And those who want it, so I talked to a few residents and we got to find a a middle ground. So I think that that would be a very cheap to us and to them. I don't need that from Sturgeon, but anyway, it's a it's a middle ground. And as for the filters, uh I know you mentioned here the reverse osmosis. As one guy talked to, I went to his place and he's got the one on the on the countertop there. It's I think it's five hundred bucks, but it's sim- it's simply for his drinking water. I I would not recommend that. I would I would like to try a a trial period with charcoal filters which do the whole house, which a couple people told me it would be under five hundred thousand, five hundred, five hundred dollars installed. So I'd like to propose that we do a trial of about ten houses at a maximum of five hundred dollars, which would give us a cost about five thousand bucks, so which is not a lot. And it's just a fluke, the graduation in Burner, and I met the guy, the troubleshooter for for the water of a city not too far from us, over a hundred thousand, uh over a hundred thousand people. And I talked to him about the charcoal filters and yeah, it it would probably work.
For manganese?
Yeah, this is uh should work for uh iron and manganese.
I would do a little more research into that because the research that I did didn't indicate that charcoal filters were overly effective for manganese. But I'm I'm not an expert and I would have to look into that further.
I know one of the guy that was at the meeting, the tall guy there on the equity, he's got a fourplex in Burner and he's got, I went to his place a few times. And he's got a filter about this size and it's for the whole building. And he put it in brand new when he built his uh his fourplex and he still has it. And you see the pipe going in, it's now brown and black, you can't see through it. On the other side, it's clear. So it does work for that. So that's what I'd like to propose. The way we pick the ten houses would be the most complaint that we had. We know quite a few at on Catseye Street, I know a few on the Piet Street. I. Yes, Counselor Bellray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um well, I'll remind everyone that I uh suggested uh filters at the council meeting last August. Um uh it didn't seem to be much uh interest at the time, but I suggested that because it was obvious to me that the long term solution would would take years. And in the meantime, we had to deal with solving the problem for not three hundred and some households, but a relatively small number of households, uh relatively low cost. Uh and and and, you know, there can only be upside. And the downside is that it it doesn't work and so it doesn't work. But we tried something and and I don't think people would resent us uh for spending five or ten or even twenty thousand dollars on filters that didn't work. But they certainly be more appreciative if we spend that money and it does solve the problem at least temporarily until a long term solution is found. So I'm totally in favor of the filter. Any other questions? Okay, I, Counselor, I'm happy about.
Thank you, Counselor Bellray. I was just wondering your idea about filling up water. They probably don't have to come to Sturgeon because I know when I play hockey in Burner, that water is great at the rink. Uh maybe they could just go there and fill it up if that's an option, I don't know. Uh but in terms of the filters, yeah, I do kind of, it would be nice to provide some sort of relief for some of the worst hit homes, just depending if it is possible or if it does work. But uh it sounds like you have a bit of knowledge on that. And then my question was regarding the long term solution, that funding application. Do we have any idea like when we might hear from that or?
We don't have a timeline for that.
No, not at all. Thank you.
Counselor Russell.
Uh thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of thoughts. Um I I think I'd be a lot more comfortable if we did have some research on these filters to make sure that they work. I'm I'm always, I I've said this since before I returned to this seat that I always would like to see that issue rectified there for the residents of Burner so that we can put it to bed. I think the long term solution is is where where the answer is really going to lie, but it's a big project undertake. Um appreciate the comments. I I've sometimes I'm listening and I feel a little bit, I'm not sure which side to think on because we talk about, you know, saving uh money in putting posts in the Tribune for old vehicles. But and on the other side of the coin, we're talking about spending five, ten, twenty thousand dollars on a system that we don't know is going to work or not. So for taxpayers' money, I have a little bit of concern. I'd be a lot more comfortable if we knew that what we're investing in is going to work as much as we can instead of just taking a shot in the dark and see if it works or not. Because twenty thousand is twenty thousand, I'm sure to taxpayers everywhere. Uh because this would come from, I'm assuming, the general uh water and sewer base, not just individuals from Burner in terms of them paying for this. So it's an investment, I'd like to make sure that there's at least some degree of uh, you know, success that we're going to be able to find in this. Uh and the other thing that I was thinking uh was, I was just going back to when I first had started on council way back in seventeen forty two. And there was a program that they had for businesses in town and it's kind, I I I thought it could be similar and maybe it's something for staff to to look at, to consider if it's possible or how it might work. But back then, they had a program, I believe it was called the Community Improvement Plan, it was for businesses, it was to access, I'll call them grants or loans from municipality to improve signage and whatnot within their uh businesses where it was a uh interest free loan that came through the municipality. So they sign up, they agree to it, they get funds, they'll pay it back over a set amount of time. Uh no interest, so it's it's uh it was it was good for the businesses to improve their facade and their. So I'm wondering if that's something that we could look at here. I'm not sure what this person, this specific uh filter is going to cost or if there's something that might be better or might work better. But maybe that's something that will get our staff to look at is to see something similar where individuals, if they're improving their homes through these filters, uh could enter into this agreement where it's not one lump sum where it's a heavy cost for them, but it is their. but it is their usage and what they're paying for and over time, whatever it might be, a year, two, three years where they have a payback plan where there's no interest to it. But it might, I'm thinking it might be two, two benefits of it is they might get a higher quality filter for their home. The other piece too, and I think it's going to be an issue regardless of what we do, is setting the parameter in terms of who's accessing these. Because it's human nature, right? If you're getting one and I live a block away, I'm going to want one too. And a block away is going to want one too. So how are we structuring this to say it's limited to this for everybody in terms of fairness? But I think in my mind, if we can have at least staff to look at this and costs, and if it's possible through the funding that we have, that individuals can make that decision for themselves. And if they want it, the opportunity is there. If they choose not to, that's fine. That's up to them. But I think if we're going to go with something that's just open or we're going to say it's only a certain amount, we saw how many people were at the meeting in Werner, you're definitely going to have more people who are going to want to access this. And the cost is going to, who knows where the cost is going to go to. So just a thought, something that we use in the past for businesses, maybe it's an idea that we can go back to for constituents, homeowners to allow them to access something and improve, hopefully improve their quality of clarity, I should say, not quality, clarity of water, but also not having a large lump sum that they have to pay for a system that works. And maybe part of that is looking into different filter filtration systems that exist and finding one that we feel might be the most effective. Because I was just, and then I'll, I know it's getting late, but I was just a little bit, again, confused where one person said they had the charcoal and it worked well, and then staff said through, you know, whatever research has been done so far, which isn't fully extensive, but the initial was that that wasn't necessarily the right fit to look at the issue that we have here in Werner. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, just to correct you, I was talking about 20,000 bucks, I'm talking about 5,000 dollars?
No, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't, I was just referring to another comment. It was, it could be 5, 10 or 20,000. I wasn't referring to yourself, sorry.
So we're talking about 5,000 dollars. It would be a max of 500 dollars per house. If they get the contractor that costs more than that, that's their problem. We supply the first filters and that's it. We do a trial of 10 houses. Simple. It's 5,000 bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it would be, I would not feel comfortable, I mean, the idea of an interest-free loan, you're essentially asking for people to pay it. It's just that they wouldn't pay interest on the loan, but in the end, they'd have to pay for it. They're already paying for their water. So asking them to pay again for a filter, I don't know, I wouldn't be comfortable in going down that route. As for, you know, I agree with councillor Ferrer, I personally would be willing to expand the trial. But, you know, 5,000, I mean, we can decide to kick the can down the road some more and do, you know, go out and do some research. Nothing will come back until September. We know the problem is worse in the summer. The test, the research and the test will be trying it on 10 households costing 5,000 dollars. So I think we should move forward with this now. It's not a huge amount of money. And it potentially solves the problem sooner than later.
Councillor Restool, what's next?
Yeah, just quickly, I've spoken enough. I just, if that's, I'm just one vote, right? But where are we putting this threshold? Because I can guarantee you right now, there's going to be more than 10 households that want this. And when 20 to 30 to 50 to 100 households want it, where do we draw the line? Do we say you get one and you don't? It puts us in a difficult position because I know there's going to be more households that come forward with this. And even further to that, if we have 10 households where it's a success and we have 300 households there, there's going to be 200 and not the other households that are going to come forward and say, we want this too. And then 5,000 turns into hundreds of thousands.
Let's say if it works and everybody applies for it, we're looking at 150,000 bucks. That would fix the problem. I think that would be a cheap.
I just want to add, that's if, right? We're talking.
Councillor Gagne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, we have a councillor that's seen it with his eyes, that it's brown white on the other side. So if it works, which is councillor says it works. We were told at the meeting, let's try to think outside the box. We're waiting for the government to flip the bill for this project, which would be great if we could, you know, but the government's not giving us anything. So we have to do something. So let's try, I'm definitely in favor of, let's try it. If it doesn't work, well, we at least try it. Because we wouldn't, if it would be, let's put it, if it would be us, that our water would be that, we would be fighting for it, of course.
Another mayor?
Okay, first I have a question and then I have a comment. And my question is, and I don't know if I missed part of the conversation here, but the staff report that I'm reading says that the filters that are recommended by staff cost 2,500 dollars per house. So I'm a little confused as where, as where the 500 dollars per household math is coming from. Like, that's a big difference. And so I'm confused as to what is being proposed.
It's not the same system.
Okay.
The system that they're talking about is the reverse osmosis.
And it's a whole home system?
No, it's probably, I don't think the 2,500 dollars would not do the whole, the whole house.
This is whole home system, is it?
Okay.
And the system that you're talking about is only, you say, on the kitchen sink to deal with drinking water?
No, the filter I'm talking about does the whole house. The filter that I went to see does the whole fourplex. It's on the line where it comes in from the ground.
And that's 500 dollars?
Yeah, and the filter is cheaper than that. You're looking at about 500 dollars installed.
Okay, so that was just confusing me a little because I wasn't sure where the 500 dollar math was coming from. And just the second comment that I would make is that if this is something that council determines to go, to go with, I think that the only fair way to determine the threshold for a pilot is based on service requests because the message has been loud and clear to the residents of Werner that when they have experience, in order for us to be able to determine where the problem is and what the solutions are, we need to hear about it every time. And there are residents there that have been very diligent in putting in the service requests and trying to help us to figure out this problem. And I think those are the residents that should be eligible for the pilot program if we do go through and we have that information as part of the, as part of the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, and Miss Katie?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say something similar to what Madam Mayor said. Maybe start with the first half, half dozen, two dozen people that have the most service requests. See how it goes after a few months and maybe expand from there. Thank you.
Councillor Ferrer? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would add to that, you know, there are people who have documented, they may not have, they may not have filed a service request. I understand, I know they should. And I would always encourage them to, but some of them don't because they don't feel it's going to make a difference. There are also other sources of information. If you go back on the, on the local Facebook page in Werner, those who've posted pictures of dirty water, obviously we're not making it up. So that's another source of information. I think I agree with you, but I think we have to look a little beyond that.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Ferrer. I know what you're saying, because I went to see so many people and one of them in particular, but then she's close to her nineties, she lives alone, this is, that's the, the problem with your water. It's yellow, but it's not bad. But that worries us when I ruin some clothes. But she would never complain. So that's, I know what you mean. Councillor Restool.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clear. Instead of wanting to start, I want this to be fixed within the community. And I'll share my thought. For 500 dollars, this is going to fix the problem in the homes. My, I have a little bit of a hard time believing that because if I had water since 2019, six years of through this, and it would only cost me 500 bucks and be fixed, if I own the home, I would have it yesterday. So I'm just having a little bit of difficulty. They own their home. We know the water is safe. We know what's, we've been through all that stuff. We understand there's discoloration because of some of the things that are in there. And I'm sure most people around the table would say the same thing. If it costs you 500 bucks and this problem's gone, you'd do it. So I'm just, I have that concern about why it comes back to all the taxpayers to spend five or 10 or 20,000 dollars when you're in a home that you own and you can pay 500 dollars and have this issue for discolored but safe water coming through. And I know it's not going to be a popular comment, but I can tell you for myself, I have a home. If I had a problem and it would cost 500 bucks to fix it, I'd fix it. And I'm going to keep the concern that, we'll start with 10. But you'll talk to your neighbor and you'll come and want the same thing. And you'll use this as a precedence. And I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying it's reality. If Frank got it, John's going to want it and Sue's going to want it and Harry's going to want it. And then we're going to be sitting here with another problem. We're going to say, not you and not you, but you can have it. I'm just saying, and at the bottom of all this, is it taxpayers' dollars?
It's not taxpayers' dollars, it's the users of the water.
Who are taxpayers?
Who are taxpayers, but it's not taxpayers in general. And to this point again, I'm going to say, that's why we do a trial. And if it does work, if it works 100%, if everybody wants one, we do it for 150,000. If it fixes the problem, what the hell? Then it's on them to change their filters and stuff like this.
What if it breaks down?
It's on them. It's, it doesn't break down. It's a filter. I got one at my place.
Okay, just in order for us to continue, we are at 9:30. So I will need a mover and a seconder to extend curfew, councillor Revard, councillor Ferrer. And just to remind you, as per procedural bylaw, this does need to pass by two thirds.
I don't remember.
Is that correct? Simple majority on that?
I'm tired, I don't remember.
This was by councillor Revard and seconded by councillor Ferrer. At approximately 9:30 PM, a motion was tabled to extend the meeting beyond regular curfew in order to proceed with the agenda.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Can you just hold one, two? Okay, passed. Carrie, thank you.
Bang, then move those things up.
I've been here so long. So I have been listening to all the comments and I appreciated the people that showed up in Werner. I'll make my comment and it will be my only comment. People are paying for water service and they're getting brown water in their house. And somebody made a comment, if it would be me, I would be pushing or it might not be popular or I wouldn't pay my water bill. That's my comment. That would be me. That's the way I would treat it until I get clear water like everyone else. I do understand councillor Restool's comment in regards, well, if we give it to Joe, then Mike, Phil and everybody is going to want it. For me, there are six addresses that are, have submitted multiple service requests. I would start with those six addresses to see if it works, whether it's a charcoal filter or one reverse osmosis on the worst house that we know of or two. And then from there, we'll get the feedback from municipal staff that are in charge to give us the feedback in regards, what's the best solution? And once we have that, then we can bring it back and at least those residents, we've listened to them when we went to Werner, we know that there's discoloration in the water and hopefully we'll have a solution from one or the other. So that would be my recommendation to you, Mr. Chair, to at least move with the six residents that do submit service requests. And if it does work, I bet you we're going to have tons of service requests after, okay? And then we can decide if we need to go test the water in the other houses that suddenly will have 300 service requests because the water is brown everywhere. But we'll have to trust staff to come back to us to say, you know what? It's warranted to have a filter system in place, whatever filter is the solution. So that's my comment to you, Mr. Chair, and to the other councillors here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gagne. Councillors, how do we?
So through you, Mr. Chair, for myself, the only thing that I would like to know is, is it 500 dollars? You're telling us that and that gentleman told you that. Is that the cost? Or are we going to go and look and, well, it's not actually 500 because if for, the filter itself is 500, but the machine that comes with it is another 300 and blah, 500? So and even if it's a thousand dollars a one, especially if we're only doing six, I agree with councillor Gagne. Let's do the six and so on. But I would like to know though, what the cost of that specific one, not the 2,500 that we're talking about, or if we do one at 2,500 or whatnot. But I'd like to know what the cost will be. I mean, I'd like to move forward with this regardless, sorry. But I would still like to find out at some point what the cost would be of a charcoal filter.
I guarantee you the cost for the filter is less than 300 dollars. I've seen it, this guy bought it at Home Depot. And I'm sure we got some at Home Hardware and stuff like this. So, and all you need is a couple of text pipes. I install mine, the leg myself, easy. So some of them might install them themselves at their home. But that's why I'm saying we cap it at 500 dollars. The reverse osmosis, if we go for one of these, that's a different story. Just the little one and it would be, it wouldn't work. You're talking about 500 dollars that's sitting on the counter. But the bigger one, you say, 2,500 dollars, it does a whole house?
Yeah, those are whole home systems that I was looking at. And I mean, just be clear, so I can look at these numbers and bring this back to you. But you're talking about a filter system that I'm presuming was installed on a newer build, not on an older home.
Yeah.
So the pipes were clean, everything was good. So when we, we go forward with the trial and we install these systems, we may not see a change because the fact is that these homes probably have buildups in their pipes and their hot water tanks. And you may see no change initially. It may take a long time before you see any change. And we talk about filter replacements, like these will need to be replaced on a very regular basis. And there's an additional cost to that as well. So I just want everyone to be aware that that's the type of thing that you are looking at. You may not see any change from putting a filter on an older home without having the pipes flushed and potentially water tanks replaced and all of that.
It's the same as iron on a well. Your stuff is already glued to the sides. It won't change. It's the water coming in. That's why we're going to do hopefully a trial. Councillor Gagne?
Thank you. Councillor Gagne, I've just been listening and I do seem to agree, like if, if a trial gives us some sort of info or if it just shows at least that we are trying, you know, as a municipality, I know we are trying, right? There's been hard work put into this grant that we're going to eventually hear from and.
So you asked about timelines. The grant did specify that we start like project next year. So we should know about the grant by next year. It's not like we're going to find out in five years about the grant.
That's amazing. And so at least by doing a trial, if we do. And so at least by doing a trial, if we do find out that it works, it works in all the merrier. But if it doesn't work, at least, you know, there's been an effort put forward. I'm not, as Counselor Restol has mentioned, I'm not 100% positive that it will work. I'm not the pro in it either. But just based off of that kind of mentality as well, right? If it is this simple, why hasn't it already been fixed? But, you know, if, if we can find a way just to, to give it a try, maybe it'll work in some people's homes, the ones that may not be dealing with that much discoloration. But, and maybe some others it won't. But it would be nice, even if it works for some, even if it's just for a small period of time while we wait for this grant and keep our fingers crossed that it's going to come through and then we'll solve the problem for good. But I'm definitely willing to do the trial, whether it be six, 10, that's on my, I can fuck with that later on.
I'm seeing an issue with municipal procurement. So we're going to buy a certain amount, and we're going to look at some supplier, I just was planning with my phone here Googling charcoal filters, and they range from 300 to 3,000. You say 500 because that's what somebody said it was. So, but what did he buy? He bought it for himself at some supplier. How do we, how do we manage that? So there's going to be some municipal procurement law issues that we have to be careful of and how we, how we manage that. And so I think there's a little bit of research that we have to do in terms of what, you know, the information says. And it goes fantastic, but I don't, wasn't there? When they built the place, where the pipe, where's that perplex located? Some kinds of issues. I'm not suggesting it's not a good idea, but I think that we, we have to follow our policy and our process too. We can't just throw everything out the window. And so we'll have to have a look at how we do that. So there's, so let's say there's six right now on complainants. That was a very firm statement made, thank you. But then how, you know, what system can be put in? You know, it's, we, we have procurement policies in law for a reason in terms of equity and fairness. And so we just have to kind of, you know, work our way around that. The installation, who owns it during a trial? Are we giving it to them and they own it? I guess that's the assumption, is we're just buying people charcoal filters on a trial and whatever, so we're going to be amending their system. Their water intake system and adding, you know, adding a bypass for a charcoal water filter intake in their house. So there's a lot of things perhaps, you know, we have to look at. Perhaps it's a grant that we're giving them with respect that here's what we've researched, here's a certain amount, we're going to provide you that, and you provide, you know, on the condition that you buy your own and install it yourself kind of thing. So there's some things that we have to figure out. It's just not that simple to go around buying filters and going, knock, 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 we put a filter in your house. You know, there's, it's, common sense would say, yeah, anything that helps, but we do have to follow some rules here. At least if I'm giving some points that you bother me with.
Well, I figured we would get through getting a direction, and then, yes, absolutely, we're going to have to deal with, with those issues. And then if you're looking at a testing, you know, you, you need to have agreement, how it's installed, you need to be sure of it, you can't just hand it over and have them install it, and then we have responsibility, what happens when we do install. So there is a lot of other considerations. If council says, yes, we want to do a filtration system on trial houses, there is a lot more that we'll have to do before we can just go ahead and do it.
Going back to the stone, it's on policy.
The 2,500 in the staff report, is that installed? Asked installed, or is that the cost of the unit and installation would be extra?
That was not including installation. And those are average, I mean, prices vary, right? So it would depend where you're getting them from, so that was just an average.
Okay. And if there were an agreement with six, six property owners, that agreement would have to include some kind of data collection requirements in order for us to actually be able to assess the success of the pilot?
Yep.
And that would have to be written into these legal agreements as well? And probably conditions on how often the filters to be changed and all that stuff?
Counselor Restol.
Through you, Mr. Chair, again. So I'm not too much of the bad guy here, fully in support of finding a solution that works. But I just wanted to add, amongst those things, I'd like to see something not, and I do this for anything, right? It costs five bucks, okay, but why does it cost five bucks? I'd like to see something in front of me that's an agreement, outlines the cost, outlines the terms, outlines the testing, because we want data from this to make sure that it's working. And I'm sure people will be honest when they say, are my waters clean, clear, or not clear? And, and another reason why I would like to see something like this in place, I go back to another board, I saw it on way back, where the organization provided LED lights in all of the homes that were under the purview of that organization. And many, not all, but many took those bulbs because they were newer technology and went and sold them. Went to the dollar store and put their own bulb back, you know? So when it comes to ownership of these devices, I think there has to be some kind of term or something in there where, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not thinking negative, this is going to happen, but it could. And I just want to safeguard taxpayers from what we're making there, to say that Joe was not going to undo it once it's done and go down the street and sell it for 2,500 bucks if it don't work. I just want that safeguard in terms of any kind of agreement that we enter into with homeowners on what it might be municipal property, might be their own property, how does that get just clear, so we know what the agreements are?
To go back, I, I don't propose the trying vote, because what I've seen and what I've been told is the charcoal filter works, and it's the cheapest. This is the trial I'd like to try. Simple, it's, we cap the resident, we call them, you want to do it? Okay. There's a $500 less on your next bill or whatever you want to work it. You get your contractor and you put one in. And from there, we see, it, it's going to be very easy to, to see, because you're going to see the pipe coming out, it stays white. Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I will interrupt the discussion when we get a motion to extend curfew. We have reviewed the procedural bylaw after the vote was taken, and it is in fact the two-thirds majority that's needed to, over two-thirds or two-thirds? Need six or seven? So we do need two-thirds in order for that to pass, and it was a fairly close vote, so I do want to just ask to take that vote again to make sure that we are actually following our procedural bylaw. So we had a motion to amend, or sorry, extend curfew. And it was moved by Counselor Rebar and seconded by Counselor Ferein. So I'd just like to see a show of hands, who's in favor to extend curfew until 10:30? One, two, three, four, five. I will put my hand up and say, keep six.
I think there are only five of us.
I put my hand up.
Yes, right to you.
Counselor Nickel?
Oh, I didn't see that. No, she didn't put her hand up.
Okay, one more time, please.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Jamie was a yes or no? Okay.
Until 10:30, sure.
Look, can you keep it?
So now it's six. Now it's six.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, please proceed, Mr. Chair, and Counselor Ferein.
Any other questions? Who's in favor of doing a trial of some, some? Say no.
Oh, you had a question? That was not a vote.
Well, it seemed like a very straightforward, we're going to do this, and I'm not in agreement with that. I like to see some paperwork in place.
So this isn't a resolution to be passed? This is just a go-ahead for staff to, to develop the terms of what would be the pilot project?
Then I'm, for me, it wasn't worded that way. It was who wants to go ahead with this trial? There's work in between that and...
So, so what that off-the-record vote is, is giving staff authorization?
So based on the fact that there's a philosophical, philosophical need to shut the trial, things are ratified by resolution unless you put a resolution. But from what I also am understanding is that you'd want to, with the resolution, have some of those answers on procurement, on what the filter is, you know, getting that information that Mr. Pelleray has, so it's actually in staff's hands, so that when you're voting on the resolution as well, that you're aware of what you're voting for, and what the actual costs are, with your potential agreements, draft agreements in place.
So could we ask staff to come back for the August 12th happy anniversary meeting with a recommendation for a framework over in the book? Would the...
Would you like that part of a resolution?
I'd like a resolution on later in the meeting, but it probably should come into committee to say, I think some of the terms that, I'm sorry if I'm taking over, Counselor Ferein, I think some of the things that, that we had discussed, which were fairly consistent, was six households. I think that...
I think the discussion could be at the resolution stage.
Okay. But if there was kind of a plan-ish?
Right.
And if there were amendments? Yeah, if there were amendments that wanted to be made by a specific, they can propose an amendment at that time?
Yeah, so we'll have a resolution with the company documentation, and then the resolution will be debated or amended. I'm just trying to expedite.
Yeah, and also, and also the terms on the part of the homeowners as far as data collection and liability, perhaps waiving of liability or whatever you guys need from a corporate standpoint. Yes?
Sure. Okay, I'll bring some info for you next week.
Great. Okay, thank you.
That's for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Staff, for patience on that. All these are big discussions.
It could be this week, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is our regular meeting. We have our consent agenda first.
It's moved by Counselor Ferein, seconded by Counselor. That would be, be resolved, the consent agenda for the council and committee, the whole thing, held on July the 8th.
Yes, be approved, presented. Thank you. I only have one question. We did not own the road at, we're of course all in Goulard. Okay, awesome, I'm excited. Okay, all in favor? The consent, our questions or comments for us all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to our planning files. We already amended 6.2.4, so we just have three here.
It is moved by Counselor Larrabee and seconded by Counselor Ferein. Whereas on July the 12th, 2022, Council for the West Nippising Municipality approved, granted draft approval for a plan of subdivision of 12 lots on lands legally described as part of Lot 12, Concession 1 of the township of Springer, to Gaitevinsan, operating as LGL properties. And whereas councils received a request for the applicant for a one-year extension to the approved draft plan, be it resolved that Council for the West Nippising Municipality approves the requested extension of the approved draft plan to Gaitevinsan until July 8th, June of 2026, to allow the subdivider time to complete the required work and meet the previously set terms and conditions.
Okay, where's the location of this subdivision?
Behind my house.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Ferein, seconded by Counselor Larrabee. Be resolved that bylaw number 202558 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445 to rezone certain lands located at 910 Canal Road from Shoreline Residential SR and Hazard Overlay to tourist commercial exception zone C2, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? So we did 6.2.3 already, and then we have the road.
Because this was under the addendum, it's not in the consent agenda, that's why it's a law. It is moved by Counselor Ferein, seconded by Counselor Larrabee. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202560 to be a by, being a bylaw to accept and dedicate lands for public highway purposes, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed, part of Lot 2, Concession 2, being parts 1 and 3, Plan 36R15290, being part of the traveled known, road known as the Bio Drive in Sturgeon Falls.
Okay, questions, comments? All in favor? I'm sorry, next we have some correspondence. The first is 6.1.3, so these, there's no action items, I'm going to have counsel on these. Thank you. Oh, sorry, there's no resolutions. Thank you. New business, please.
It is moved by Counselor Rebar and seconded by Counselor Pelleray. Be it resolved that council authorizes exemptions to the West Nippising Noise Bylaw 199975 for the following events. August 9th, 2025, at the Sturgeon River House Museum, to Andrew Jean-Henri from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM. 416 Champagne Road, August 9th, from 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM. 47, and 658 Delorme Road, August 2nd, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Doesn't make sense.
Yes, it does, but it is an afternoon event, they're just asking. I think the event actually ends at 8:00 PM.
Okay. I know, that was wrong, thank you. For Water Palooza, at 658 Delorme Road.
Okay, questions or comments? Did we not delegate authority on noise bylaws?
But if only it's for items which have been held in the past.
Okay, okay, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counselor Pelleray and seconded by Counselor Rebar. Whereas at the meeting on June 17th, Council for the West Nippising Municipality reviewed a proposed flag protocol policy. Be it resolved that council approve the flag protocol policy as presented, and that the policy shall come into force and take effect on the day of its adoption, and be it further resolved that the flag protocol policy be incorporated into the West Nippising policy.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor Pelleray and seconded by Counselor Rebar. Be it resolved that council authorized the construction of a basketball court at the Cash Bay Community Center with materials and labor donated by deep construction, and further that council will cover the cost of the basketball net, parking barriers, and required survey work at an estimated cost of $15,000, and further that signage be installed on the site to formally acknowledge the contribution of the contractor.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor Rebar and seconded by Counselor Pelleray. Whereas council has received a discretionary grant request from the West Nippising Childcare Corporation for the rental of Cash Bay Hall for Christmas party held on December 12th. Be it resolved that pursuant to policy 2024137, council authorizes the rental fees in the amount of $600 for the use of the Cash Bay Hall be waived.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counselor Pelleray and seconded by Counselor Rebar. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising Municipality authorizes the execution of the Connecting Links Program Contribution Agreement with His Majesty the King and Rite of Ontario for provincial funding for rehabilitation of Highway 64, Connecting Link from Duffren Street to Savoury Road.
Questions or comments? Counselor Pelleray?
Oui, une question, je suis curieux, Monsieur Barbeau. Connecting Link, ça n'a fait deux quand on a ou un? Parce que je disais devant ça puis c'est deux. Ben, on a toujours traité comme en temps du, c'est classifié comme Connecting Link. Je suppose que c'est une affaire de classification que vous indiquez. Mais, c'est la rue 17 et 64, c'est possiblement qu'il y en a deux, mais, it's all classified at one point. So we have a continuous group, or a, we have a continuous...
it's all classified. So we have continuous group, or continuous roads that are connected. One that leaves, starts at Corset Road and then it's just a little, but we then turn down, down, we don't get to, but we leave it that way. So that's all connected. So it's all connected and it's connecting.
Parce que je disais pour le service, c'est, see, that Connecting Link, the song, the grant and whatever.
Non, trans, c'est, c'est...
Do you not see? These are questions? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counselor Rebar and seconded by Counselor Pellerin. Be it resolved that council supports the submission of a funding application to the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation for the Rural Enhancement Funding Stream for the redevelopment of the Goulard Park baseball fields. And further, CAO or designate be authorized to submit the application and all required documentation.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we don't have any other items on our agenda. The mayor's report on funds, but since it's past curfew, I will waive that, except to say that Fields Farmers Market is this Saturday. If I've missed your event, I'm sorry. And I also would like to congratulate Proud Dad and his daughter, Riley Restool, because Riley was named Miss?
Ki-Kandad.
Ki-Kandad at the Do Kisa Powel. So I was really thrilled to see her there. And I know she will be a great ambassador for the Do Kisa Foundation, and that will open next year. So congratulations, Riley, and Proud Dad and Mom. Thank you. With that, we will take the motion proceeding to closed session.
It is moved by Counselor Pellerin and seconded by Counselor Rebar. Be it resolved that we proceed into closed meetings, authorized in section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act to discuss the following. Personal matters about identifiable individuals, including local border municipal employees. And, yes, that's it, regarding the CAO recruitment process and the gender watch.
Okay. Questions or comments? All of us in favor? Carrie? Thank you. One sec.
You can come back in?
Sorry, I was unmute, Counselor, again.
I'm going to end the meeting.